We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda or changes to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Does anybody else have any?
So is the, is the work session and budget at the end, is that part of the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
So, but that will be separate from the meeting, correct?
Yes, we would adjourn from the meeting.
We'll adjourn.
And then do the work session, yes.
And in that, in that work session, there's no motions or action items.
Yep.
Okay, but is that, is that open to the public too then?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Now, now if we don't have any changes, we do not have to approve the agenda, do we, or should we?
I think so.
We always have, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just, I would like to pull something from consent. Is that, do you want to do that now, just?
Yeah, go ahead. We can do it now.
Just put that under, who do you want to?
Well, we'll put it under.
Or just at the end and have.
County, county administrators' report.
I just want to, would like to pull the number three, the Otter to Treasure Resolution 1B.
Okay.
For discussion.
Yeah. All right, are there any more changes to the agenda? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, motion by Barry, second by Erica. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. Minutes from February eighteenth meeting, do we have any corrections or?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Page two of three, under number two, under recorder salary, probably recommend, recommend salary by resolution. Recommend to set, to set salary annually by resolution.
Yep.
To make it a little clearer. Then on page three of three, on number two, motion and second to approve personal requests, full-time health or instipulating a change in grant funding will result in the reevaluate. I would say, I don't know if reevaluation would be, I would say possible elimination of that position rather than reevaluation doesn't. I would just, instead of reevaluation, possible elimination of that position, depending upon the amount of funding lost.
Okay, I'm good.
I mean, it's not sure one or the other, but.
Yep.
No, I don't, I think the revaluation, eh, was okay, but it was very clear. The eliminate, or termination was part of that.
Is that it?
That was it.
Mr. Chair, I just had one on my report and correspondence, what I talked about, tour of the following buildings, old jail extensive transit courthouse. Just grammatically, that should be the end. And then the transit Westlake Drive, that's all my, those were my reports.
Yep.
So just a period instead of comma there.
Or a semicolon.
Whatever you want.
That's what I had.
Oh my gosh.
I know, is that something else?
I don't know that a period would be appropriate, but.
Well, I have a sister that's an English teacher. Do you want me to call her and get her?
Phone a friend.
She might not answer. She's kind of, she's kind of burnt off. Don't worry.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a, a very, motion by Barry for the approve the minutes? We have a second.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, consent agenda. We are, we have one item already polled. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to pull out of the consent agenda? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus number three?
I'll make motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. Commissioners, open forum. Is there anybody on the open forum? Nobody signed up. All right, reports and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
I can go first.
I have one.
Um, we had our EDA meeting, just a couple of things we discussed. We're going to be moving forward with getting some bids for our Maple Avenue apartments and using some of our state affordable housing grant money. We're looking to do new sidings, windows and decks. They're much needed. There's also a possible land proposal outside of Detroit Lakes with Otter Tail County power on a solar easement. So we're in the very beginning stages of that, using some of the land that the EDA owns. And then we just also approved the $3,000 for project four twelve Jeff Siegler collaboration that was originally bought to the board. And we approved that. And then we also approved for three of our members to go to the Chamber of Commerce Economic Summit on three twenty-six. We had our extension meeting, just a couple statistics. We currently have 237 enrolled in four H. That's up three from 2024 with 25 new members. And one thing that Becker County is really, really good at is keep it, is those reenrollments. I think we're at like 80% as a county where the, the state is only at 60%. So we, we're doing pretty good there in four H. Then we have just a little update on master gardeners. We have 26 master gardeners, 25 active and one emeritus. I don't know how to say that. Thank you. Then they have Horticulture Day coming up, collaboration between Clay and Becker County. That's Saturday, April fifth, and it will be in Moorhead. Anything else in extension?
No, our regional director is back, back. She was on, she was on maternity leave, so we got her back.
Yeah.
She introduced herself to our newest member is here today, Sandy Gunderson is our newest member and was in attendance and.
It was nice to have her. Then I just had Fair Board. Fair Board, we, it was approved to bring back the Becker County Fair pageant. However, it's not going to be at the Becker County Fair or during the Becker County, during the Becker County Fair. They're going to partner with the Miss Northwest program and I believe.
Rachel Kohler?
Rachel, Rachel Kohler is going to run it and I believe they're looking at the end of June or the beginning of July for that.
Yep.
And then we just discussed the kind of, the final projects for grants. I think that's all I have.
Yep. And then one other thing too, the gymnastics building is going to start, they're going to start this spring. So one of the big concerns for the Fair Board is the water runoff. And so the city has agreed to fix that because there is water runoff on the current, from the current gymnastics building in this. City has agreed to, whatever the word is, solve that problem.
Mitigate.
Mitigate, that was the word I was looking for. Thank you, Barry, for giving that word. Anybody, who else would like to go next?
I can, I can go. Uh, so on the nineteenth, we had an airport meeting. Carrie and I attended over with the city, discussed some repaving projects. But pretty much steady as she goes there. The twentieth, I, I went, I went to a Midwest Economic Summit in Fargo sponsored by the Chamber. I just, and just some takeaways from that, that I thought might be appropriate here. The economist was Matthew Finn. And he had lots of supporting information for all this, all this, what I'm going to tell you, but the three takeaways are this. There's 10,000 baby boomers retiring daily. So when we talk about housing, healthcare and housing together are going to be a huge push. Number two takeaway, we need 2 million workers to replace these baby boomer workers. U.S. birth rates can only produce half a million workers at current rates. And that's, that shows in our demographics, even at the, the state level, they said it's going down. The numbers of people are going down. So you either got to replace that with immigrants or you got to replace it with robotics and AI. That was the second takeaway, if you expect to keep things sustained at the current levels. And the third, third thing was just the uncertainty of Trump with, you know, with tariffs and how that is going to affect. So those are the three takeaways, healthcare, robotics and AI and the current administration. Those were the three takeaways of what's going to affect us going forward. So I just thought that was interesting. On the twenty-fourth, we had a joint powers meeting with the city concerning subdivision regulation. I think we're going to get somewhere with that. I think what actually Charlie suggested might, might be able to work. This is happening in Lakeview Township. I'm very aware of that with the extraterritorial thing, with the six townships. So, but I think, I think there's a plan there that we can come up and work something out with. Then I went down to AMC, I did some testimony training and Barry's probably going to talk about the outstate, what's it called, MRC?
MRC.
MRC.
Yeah. But the good thing in that meeting, I sat in with Barry, but the good thing is that I got the feeling all the townships are pretty, or rural townships anyway are united and we're kind of in the same boat.
Rural counties.
What did I say?
Townships.
Counties.
Coming up.
And I'm sure the townships are in the same.
Same, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but this cost shift, and that's what we talked about, our senators and congressmen on the next day. Met with Utkey and Kupac, Green, Joy and Knutson. The cost shifts to the county are what I thought was, everybody was, from the counties, were really pushing back on.
I think with AM, with MRC too. And we went around the table and Carrie was, well, I did mention how great our administrator was.
Yeah.
But Dave, and Dave was in attendance too.
He didn't say I was great though.
But it, it, really everyone's, I mean, everyone had the same concerns about the cost shifts to county on healthcare. It was by far the topic of every conversation between legislators and, and commissioners and it. If, if you're, if you're not aware of what's, what's being proposed, it, it is the scariest budget cycle for commissioners for counties that I have ever seen. And it, and the good news that, that I took, I mean, it's not good news, but at least the recognition from the Democrat and Republican leaders that spoke at the luncheon was, this isn't, they, they've distanced themselves from the governor's proposal. They said, even the Democrat leader said, this is not our budget. This is the governor's proposal. We did not have input. So you could see they were, they were saying, we, we, we can't do this. This is not a sustainable budget. So that was a little glimmer of light, I thought. The one, the one I think they're going to probably push to kick down the road is the African-American Act of the Poverty Act. I truly believe that's going to be just pushed down a little bit. And it was surprising that, you know, and Carrie can probably add, and I don't want to elaborate too much, but, you know, we met with both sides of the aisle and, and on the ones that have been approved, there was quite a bit of difference of.
Of opinion.
Of opinion on how, how much they were going to cost and how, you know. So, you know, you leave there with kind of more questions and, you know, what, what is the cost on a couple of these programs? This, the safe and sick and the extended leave, those are, those were, they're very concerning what the cost is. And it was, it was interesting, Senator Kupac was concerned of the safe and.
Sick leave?
Safe and sickly. He, he said, there are questions, there are, there's things that need, should be changed in that. So that was.
Is that the one that's?
That's in place already.
Yeah.
And he said that, I can't remember how he put it, but he was very open to looking at changing some of the requirements on that program because there was no, what did he say? There's, there's no.
There's no provisions for emergency workers.
Yeah, I mean, it, there's a lot of things that weren't, and he was more supportive of the extended leave because there was, I mean, and he explained it a little bit different than I'd heard it in other explanations. So there's gray area in there, what, you know, you got this one and this one, and where is that, how is that going to shake out? And, and so there is a lot of concerns about those two, but the, the new stuff is even worse. I mean, the, I can't remember the acronym.
Medical paid family leave?
The MAFPA?
Yeah.
The Minnesota African American Family Preservation.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Welfare Disproportionality Act?
Yes.
That one.
Yes.
It's my work, I get it.
That one, yeah.
I got the first three acronyms down and I might get a fourth and down the road, but, and I, you know, we, I, I think it's a terrible name for it because it's not an African-American bill. It's, it is a poverty bill and I think it was, I think it should, that acronym isn't.
It really what it is, is it's the way, Minnesota has the worst child welfare disproportionality placement rates in the country. So the, the purpose of it is to address the disproportionality of children in the child welfare system. It is a terrible name, but that, but that is the purpose of it.
And I, and I think what happened, and I, both parties, I think, say this, that it was, it was a mistake to not have the financial notes on these bills to know what, what and where the costs were going to come from. And I think that was the big takeaway from them. And, and I think they were pushed through with, with the best intentions. But the cost is not, you can't just do something with, without going and looking at what the costs are and how that's going to affect and how you can pay for that. So that's kind of the biggest takeaway from all of AMC and MRC. It was 100% united front that, I mean, metro and rural counties, this, this cannot function. Of course, metro counties in some of these cases have a lot of the things in place already.
For the MAFPA, yeah.
Yeah, so that, they're not going to be financially impacted like, like us. And the, and the pilot programs were well-funded also.
Yeah, well-funded, their pilot.
But most, most counties were saying that we will be adding, you know, two, three staff and vehicles because you have to now go to the homes instead of having it come in. So Denise probably can chime in on some of the, I'm, I'm sure you've studied what the cost would be to Becker County in these programs as presented. So maybe, maybe when you're, when you come up later, you can just say, this is, these are your concerns, are the costs and. But that's the message that we hammered in and.
But one, one other thing.
Yes, I can.
That I know, that we, we were at the MRC meeting, they were talking about the Department of Corrections mandating for mental health inmates that deputies would be their supervisory people. Now, this hasn't happened to larger jails and counties, but it's, it's starting to happen in the smaller ones. Because like, what was it, Kitzin County lady brought that up? Isn't that correct?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, and, and then Bill, Bill, what's Bill's last name? From what, Sterns from Odina brought it up too. So I, I don't, I don't know how much traction it has yet, but I.
Sheriff Glaner, you, they said they brought it up at the sheriff's meeting too, the, the requirement, the legislation that would require a, for mental, for mental health concerns, a deputized officer at a 24-hour post in the jails.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, like a, for, for mental health reasons, that's.
Yeah. Yep.
But, I mean, we have a pretty, we have a pretty, we up, up the nursing program. Excuse me, but we increased hours last year of that program. So.
I think, I mean, which is good, but I think there's a huge difference between a medical nurse and a mental health practitioner.
Right, but, but they, they can gauge some of, they're better equipped to gauge some of that anyway, to, to send. I'm just looking at some MRC notes and most of it we've touched on. Again, we've, we've. Oh, they, they also mentioned the funding gap for transportation. They said that we would, we'd need another 800, 890 million. 890 million a year funding gap for transportation at, right now.
Transportation meaning like highways?
Yes, yeah, highways and bridges. And the, the big date that we're looking for is March sixth, and that's when the new forecast is coming out. So.
Mr. Chair, just to finish up, so a meeting with the senators and representatives for a new county official, that was very beneficial. I thought it was, I didn't know what to expect, but it was very worthwhile. And I guess, coming out of that, I mean, we were all saying the same thing. I've heard Barry talk about these cost shifts the last month and I'm like, what? I'm trying to figure it out for myself, but that pretty much galvanized my thought. I mean, every county is saying the same thing and Barry was first to the punch there, so good job, Barry. Twenty, the third day, we had a transportation infrastructure meeting in the morning. The funding gap, that was the major point of discussion, was the funding gap once again. How are these roads going to be funded? Are they going to shift it to the counties? And, you know, there was great pushback on that. And I thought AMC had already prepped all of the senators and congresspeople for what we're going to, everybody was singing the same language, I thought. They also talked about something, registration tax had went up on vehicles. They talked about something, road user charges. I said, you mean toll roads? And they said, no, it's not toll roads, it's road user charges. And we had a little discussion on it, but I, you know. I, I don't think it's going to happen, or it's not going to happen in the near future, but they're turning over every rock to find some other funding mechanism, which.
In the past, they've been talking about a user fee and that's kind of like they go off mileage rather than.
Yes.
You know, your vehicles, you know. So, and that, that's a way to recoup some more expenses from electric or hybrid. So, you know, me driving electric or hybrid, there's an additional tax for electric, but should, should electric and hybrids being, just paying by, should you be paying by the mile? Now, I've always hated that because I thought it was too much to, it would be very difficult and, and produce a lot of liars out of, a lot of people. But how do you, how, what's a fair tax to, to tax on people if, I don't know, I don't, you can. You can argue either side on that one. I, I'm.
Mr. Chair, we, we did have long discussion on that and how do you, when you cross over to North Dakota, Iowa, Wisconsin, how, how do you charge for that? So it was, it was just, it went nowhere, in our meeting anyway, but it's on the table, looks like. Okay, last meeting was environmental. We're going to proceed with the Ten County Regional Solid Waste Study. The organics that we talked about, they passed a month ago, that's going to be rolling out in hopefully May or June. We had to, we're going to have to do a, a solid waste permit change. Hopefully it'll be a minor modification, just with our shingles and organics, how to process them. A major modification would require a engineering report, so we hope we can get that through with a minor modification. Our 2012 compactor truck, we're, we're looking to trade that out for something newer while it's got a little life left in it. And then we talked about an educational program, just kind of what Sandy did, we're, we're trying to reinvent how we can, how we can get the word out on things that are ever-changing. Richard, did you?
Well, that guy, I don't know if you guys have heard this guy, Otter Tail County, he's their solid waste. He does the solid waste commercials. Trying to think of what, what he calls himself. So something, he gets your attention when you hear that commercial. It's kind of like the garage. Yeah, and he's got, he's, yeah, he's, he's an interesting personality. And so we're looking for something like that and maybe we, we're talking about at these recycle bin sites. Maybe a kiosk or something that we could switch out to just educate people on recycling and try and get more recycling. So, and maybe some commercials.
I think you highlighting a commercial event would be an absolute winner.
Could be the face.
Because you're entertaining too.
Not as, not as good as the guy from, from Otter Tail County, but that, so that's the idea there.
I, I know, I, I think continued education in recycling is, is key. I mean, and I, I hate to even speak when Sandy's in the room because I'm going to misspeak on something, but I was just at, you know, we had a lot of pizzas at my mother's the other night and, and pizza boxes are not recyclable in, with food, what's that? With, if they're going in organic, but as, for cardboard with food contaminants, they're not recyclable. But as Sandy pointed out, if we get organics, they can go in the, in the organic pile. But, so I, I said, no, they're not organic. But yesterday I was in my mom's and there was a pizza box and like, so someone didn't hear the message and. But there's lots of things, you know, that people think, oh, this can go in here. Well, it shouldn't go in there. It's just garbage and that, that's, we need to learn. But I think some of the things that, that have been put in place, like the batteries have been a huge success. And I collect even my little double A and triple A batteries and put in there. I don't know if I'm supposed to, but I'd rather put them in there than just the garbage because they have lithium in too and dispose of them properly and.
Yeah, no, that's the best place for all of them.
So.
And Mr. Chair, just, you know, we're trying to replace what Sandy did and bring it to some level of success. So, I mean, Sandy did a great job, so, but, yeah, we, we have 36 of those blue bin recycle sites in the county. And we're, we're thinking of a kiosk or something to put up there to try to get people to recognize what is recyclable, what isn't. Because it's kind of ever-changing, so, but that's, that's pretty much the end of my, my report.
Well, who wants to go next?
Just to, yes, we, a lot of things, I'm not going to reiterate AMC and MRC because, but a lot of good information there and you, and it's nice just to have that. Hearing everyone else's has the same concerns and. Also, I, I put on everyone's, or most of you had a Lakeland Mental Health annual report. We had our annual meeting and regular meeting. Lakeland Mental Health was below budget on their income and expenses, but we had a revenue of, I think it was 7%. So, or, so of the, of 7% over expenses, which was above, we exceeded our goals, but we, you know, wasn't up to the budgeted amount. So it's very solid financially. Moorhead's obviously up and running and, and we're looking at purchasing a, a building that we're occupying down in. Oh, I'm drawing a blank, I have to look, but anyway, it's a small, small outs office that we're doing business in, in a county and got a real favorable purchase price. I think it was, you know, I think it was 400 and some thousand, so, and we're in there now. And the, it was a really good, really good purchase for us or is going to be, so we're set there. And the next project I'm kind of pushing for is either a remodel or fixing up the Detroit Lakes office because it's really, I mean, you see it in that tiny, tiny room where you meet and, and everything moves to one side because it's, and then you have little boxes on the ground for noise, white noise, so that the sound doesn't travel. So it's, it's, it's in need of an upgrade and hopefully in the, that's their next project on the, on the horizon. But otherwise, the one concern was the 23% reimbursement from MA that will be, that'll be phased out for some of their, some of their clients. So that's another reduction in income, so that was how they're going to work that. Had a joint powers meeting up in Fargo and joint powers is with the Red River Basin Committee. You know, that meeting really is, is quarterly right now. It's not, it's not well-attended and we, we thought how, how we should probably have one, one meeting, I mean, have the four meetings, but one meeting a year where we make appointments and elections for the board, the sitting member on the Red Basin Committee, is we should try to get a better turnout on that meeting. So we're looking at how, how to do that. And we did have a speaker there, Kim Melton. She's an employee of the basin and she works on soil health. She's a soil health coordinator and she works with soil health for farmers and groups and helps out with any, you know, possible grant, granting. So it was interesting. After that, we just re-elected Gary and then Steve Jacobson. There are, there are members on the commission and for the southern part, it was Jenny Mojo and Ron Staples. Ron is on the Bowser Board also, so have really good representation and have very knowledgeable, so that's good. The other, the other staying concern was the buffer cut. The, they said there's $150,000 to be cut on the buffer law. So we'll be maybe losing that. And I, I'm thinking that might just be transferred straight over to soil and water. So they, you know, so that cut would be directly affecting the, the, I don't know, the enforcement probably of the buffer law. Not that we've had to, but they, they monitor that continuously also. That brings us to AIS. I think AIS was another one that's on the chopping block, so, and Carl talked about that before. See what other, I had a couple other committees, I think, but go ahead, Dave, if you have. I misplaced my notes, so.
Okay, Richard, do you have any?
Well, I had EDA with Eric. I don't have anything to add to that. I had environmental with Phil, just a couple of things. We're, we're shipping our tires to the cities. We're now going to probably be shipping them to North Dakota and we're going to save about 70 bucks a ton doing that. So that's, that is a big deal. And then we are overhauling one of our trucks at the, right at the landfill and our mechanic's not, he's helping. But we're going to save quite a bit of money. We have a mechanic coming in and helping him, so. quite a bit of money. We have a mechanic coming in and helping him. So, that is, that is, we're doing better and better with the maintenance and take care of the trucks out there. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Barry, you, Barry and I had a courthouse meeting.
Yeah, I was just looking for that.
Where I put it either. Anyway, we, most of the stuff's on the agenda, but we did talk about the scanning of the documents, recorder scanning, planning and zoning, what else did we do? Assessor. And we're, and we have an issue with, with, the recorder books have two, some of the, some of the pages had two documents on them, or one document finished and in the middle of the page, another one started. So, the company decided without consulting us to make two copies of that page, so that each document was on a separate page. So, they charged us for that. So, we're not okay with that, as far as I know. Maybe, Carrie, you can elaborate more on that.
Well, we had bills in excess of, well, the last one, I think it was 57 or 59,000. So, it's quite expensive.
You know what, Mr. Chair, I was down at the Otter Tail County meeting last month, and they had just finished this process. They did talk about that two-page thing though. So, Carrie, maybe you might wanna call down and see what they, how they rectify their situation. So-
That they also got overcharged?
Ah, yes. Yep.
Well, I mentioned it at MRC in my, when we-
Yes, you did.
Said, do not be very careful. Because when you, I mean, if they're quoting it, it's a way to get your foot in the door and then overcharge when you get it.
Yes, yeah. That's the way.
It's a tactic that, that's unprofessional.
And overcharged without communication is the-
Yep. And I think, and I, and I would say that that was the key. And we did meet department heads with the owner of the business. So, more to come with that.
Carrie, this might be something that we ask the state to look into. I mean, this, this, if it's, if they've used that same tactic and they've been told time and time, this was not in your, this was not explained or quoted, I think that's a, I think you could justify that this is a, this is a, something to look in for the, the state to look into.
Okay.
If they, I mean, if they've done that to every county they've done, and they say, oh, well, we didn't know you, this was a concern. I mean, obviously, they're, they're doing it maliciously, or financed for finance.
Well, and the amount of money.
It's significant.
Significant.
Yeah, quite a bit. I have a couple more. So, I had Fairboat with Eric, because we covered that pretty good. AMC Legislative Conference, we covered that really good. Also, I have some information on Partnership for Health, but I'm gonna wait until it comes up in the agenda, and we'll talk about it there. And then I also had a DAC meeting. So, we have a new board member on the DAC. Her name is Christina Marquis, M-A-R-Q-U-I-S. She does have a development, a developmentally, I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, handicapped child. Is that correct? I don't know. I'm gonna say, I tried to figure that out. Anyway, so she has three actually developmentally handicapped children, and one of them is currently at the DAC. So, she's awesome. She is very knowledgeable. She's super go-getter. She really is concerned and advocates, and she's gonna be really good. We are also revising our job descriptions for our management team. Our management team consists of a day coordinator, a residential coordinator, a VRS coordinator, and a business manager and the executive director. So, we're revised, the things have shifted a little bit and changed of what we kinda want them to do and how they are doing their jobs. So, we're gonna make sure we have that wrote down, so it's, it's accurate. And then, we had to get a new IT company at the DAC, which costs not cheap amount of money. It was $21,000. We've been, they've had, they've been hacked three times in the last two years, or a year and a half, and the IT company that, we have nothing, nothing catastrophic has happened, but it's, the IT company we currently have says, well, we have to charge you more for this, we have to charge you. And then, so, they've gone with another one that'll cover everything, and it's better updated. They will store the data better and safer. So, I guess you just have to do it sometimes. Then, last thing, we have 53 day clients now, which is up from-
Fifty?
Three-
Fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
Day clients or 53-day clients?
Fifty-three day clients. Maybe we should-
Fifty-three?
Fifty-three. Five-three day clients.
Oh, okay. Fifty-three day clients, not fifty-three day clients.
Yeah. Residential clients, we have 37. And VRS, we currently have six clients. What VRS does is the VRS coordinator works with that person and, and agencies to find that person a job. And once that person finds the job, then they go to, they can, they can go to that job and be fine, or they can be supervised with a DA, with a DAC worker, and then they'll go to their job and they'll go there with them. So, we also have 21 people that are out in the community working, and, and we're, some of the, some of them are directly supervised, some of them are just monitored. But, but yeah. So, all in all, we have 117 clients. So, that's a lot, that's up quite a bit from 17 months ago when our executive director took over. So, that's great. That's it. Anybody else have anything else for the reports?
I just got this flyer from, from AMC, and about the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation and Child Welfare Disproportionately Act. I think we should make copies and have them available, so people can better understand it and contact their legislators and say, you know, this, this is a good goal. I think we should work towards this, but this is not something that we should put at the expense of counties next year, because it's supposed to start in-
2027.
Okay. But I, I think if anyone wants to look at this, I think Nate, if you want this copy, I think it's critical that we understand it. And it, again, I think it was, had bipartisan support, but the cost, there was no, there was no idea what the cost would be. And I think for rural counties, it's a much higher cost percentage-wise for, for individuals than what anyone anticipated. So, we need to find the resources to, the state has to find resources to make this work. Because according to Bill Sterns, this will cost a 10% levy increase just itself. And some of these other things, they're saying this is a 3% to 5% increase, this is a 3%. Our own increases are probably gonna be, you know, significant this year, too. So, you stack all those on top of, that's what everyone's talking down there. If you start stacking all these things on top of each other, it is not in a, you know, it's not a, it's not a level that we can do it at the counties. And, and that was the strongest message I've ever heard, totally united at county level. So, I think everyone heard it down there, but we're in the, we're in the worst cycle possible, because the predictions we heard that the $780 million surplus that we have is going to be eliminated when the report comes out March 6th, that they feel that there's nothing left of that. And then you go at the next biennium, and there was a five-
Billion?
Billion-dollar deficit. So, I asked the question, can we start laying off state workers that were just hired last year for the, like, for the housing? They dumped one-time money in there, and it's not sustainable. So-
So, that's, reminds me of a point, that family medical, paid medical leave will increase 400 employees to the state.
Yeah, there's a, they, they started a new agency within the state, and has 400 employees to monitor this one, one, just one. And then there were, they increased, what was it, 68 employees for, for low-income housing last year?
Yep.
The cannabis, cannabis one should pay for itself with the fees, like, I'm hoping. I, you would think that it would be-
Once they get their stuff figured out.
But if they're way behind, who knows? But anyway, and I think, I've been preaching this doom and gloom for our forecast, but it, it certainly didn't disappear for our meetings. We have hope that it won't be as significant, but it's, it is still going to be a significant hit from the state, no matter what we do. So, anyway.
Any other reports by anybody else? All right. Let's move on to appointments. Looks like we have an EDA appointment. Would anybody, does anybody have any appointments?
I do not. Mr. Chair, there were two people, and were you, did you clarify that-
Yes.
One was not-
The one was not-
Eligible, because it was not from that district.
The, the appointment is for District 3, and one of the applicants was from District 4, so that person is not-
They would have to apply for the District 4.
Yes, correct.
Is the District 3 person here, or that, anyone here speaking on that?
So, the, the two appointments, Mr. Chair, were Rachel, or not appointments, the two people were Rachel Johnson and Sarah Hoffman.
Yes.
And Sarah Hoffman was the one that was, lived in Richard's District, District 4, so she's ineligible by where she lived.
Correct.
So, that leaves one applicant. That's the way I understood it.
And is this, this has been vacant for a while? Position code?
Well, Mr. Chair, Hank Lutke-
Okay.
Resigned.
Okay.
Because of his health concerns.
I think, Phil, if this is your district, I think you have every right to say, you know, you wanna examine it further. But if you're comfortable, today would be a day to appoint. But if you wanna, I mean, if you wanna look for someone else or see, understand that you're, I think it's totally reasonable for you to do that. But if you don't have anyone in mind, or-
Cody?
No, this is to fulfill the remainder of the terms with a one-year term right now. So, it might be sufficient to appoint someone, and, you know, it's gonna be up again for a year. So, and if you have the time for representation, that's what we do.
Yeah, I, I do not know Rachel Johnson. I've just seen what she sent in. But with what Cody said, I guess since we don't have any more applicants, I don't have anybody in mind. So, I would move to appoint Rachel Johnson to fill out the term of the EDA board in place of Hank Lutke.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Phil, a motion by Barry. Are, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair-
Yeah.
For future reference, like, okay, Barry, so that's District 3, that's my, should I have been actively going out and looking for someone? Is that, it was posted?
It was posted.
I mean, it's, it's kind of your, if you don't get any applicants, it's kinda on you.
Yeah.
I mean, so, you certainly should, should be aware of people, or ask people as you cross them if they're, you know, if you know someone that you think be good at something, ask if they're interested down the road. And but, but yes, if you don't, if you, you can just leave it up. If you, if it's open and it's, no one applies, it won't get filled till you find someone to put it in. So, yeah, it does end up on your, and everyone else will help too. But I mean, it does fall on your shoulders.
All right. Let's move on to our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a follow-up to the legislative meeting, for those of you that were there, when I asked the question of Senator Kupac, I asked the question with regards to paid family leave, and whether or not there was any exemptions allowed for government entities to replace what we have currently in place. For example, for our county, as we all know, we have, you know, banks of sick leave separate from vacation leave, and also floating holidays or personal days, as we call them. In addition to that, we also had put in place a catastrophic leave bank for those that maybe don't have paid leave. So, I asked the question. It was interesting. I asked the question as we went along to each legislator, and I got different answers. Surprise. However, perhaps what came out of this, which was good, and I will have every intent of following up with Senator Kupac. He did indicate that he would be willing to look at a modification to allow some, either buyback or some replacement of what we currently have, not just us, but other government entities. So, I will follow up with him and-
He said we were exempt if you qualified.
He, he did say that. And then I followed up with AMC to ask the question again, and I was told that there's different definitions of exempt, and really what people believe that that means. So, there's-
That's what was so confusing, because you'd go to the one party and you get a sunshine, I mean, you get a different, totally different view than, so I think the intent wasn't even, it wasn't clear when it was voted on, I'm sure, but-
Yeah. So, I don't know if perhaps what he was talking about is a different company to regulate, or do something different than what the state. It's, it's quite unclear to me. But since I got his ear when we were there, I will definitely follow up and make more work for myself, but for the betterment.
One thing I'd like to add to that, too, there was a difference of opinion if it was funded or not. What, we had some, we got some information that it was, yes, it's funded. Well, then we got information that, no, it's not. And sort of funded through payroll tax. They're, they're going to tax the business owners more, or the organizations more. And then also, the, the, there's a, the, the business owners or the organization have the option to tax the employees, too, for half of it. So, that's not really funded, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion, because I own a business.
Right. And, and with that, I think really what we heard, or what I heard loud and clear, is that the cost of this keeps going up. They have a cap on it, but we're nearing the cap of what they believe the cost will be. So, so, again, I will follow up with that. The other, when we were done with the meeting with legislators, the other message that we were able to, I believe, and provide language for was to reallocate bonding money, bonding, the funding that we had for the Heartland Trail for '23. And that was, from my perspective, well-received. So, I will follow up on that. And we did have a couple that offered to look at some modifications to that, so that funding then would be available again for the Heartland Trail here. We, I had asked some questions while we were down there, and, and everything I've heard thus far is that there is no anticipated bills coming forth for any request for land transfers. So, we are not hearing that, or we're not expecting anything with regards to that topic. And if you've all read the newspaper with White Earth, there was just an article, I think by Nathan actually wrote the article too, that some charges were brought with regards to their tribal council, but nothing formal. So, when you use charges and, and formalities, it doesn't, it does not appear at this point that that's going to go forward. So, but still, some chaos going on there. So, hopefully, they will figure that out soon. I also received either on Friday or Monday, a guide for requests for congressional earmark grants from Senator Klobuchar. So, I'll read through that and see what pertains to us, and, and what would be helpful, and who that might be helpful to. And I'll push out that information to whom it needs to go to. Were you gonna say something?
No.
Oh, okay. There's a meeting, open house tonight at the city to provide information to the public for the Westlake Drive project, just as a reminder. I can't remember if it starts at 4:00 or 5:00, but that is tonight. So, if anybody's interested. I will be working with Matt from, Matt Erickson from Veteran Services to look at how we are going to move forward with serving veterans in our county, as he, his last day nears the end here. And so, I will have more information for the council of how we plan to do that. His position is currently advertised, and I did look through our applicant stack, I think, last night. We do have a lot of applicants in there, which is, it's, it's good. So, we'll hopefully be able to fill that. And I believe our first review of applicants is next week, if I recall the deadline. So, that's all I have for my report. Oh, one last thing. I just wanted to clarify, when there was discussion last, our last meeting with regards to the public health position, I think I did have some follow-up conversation with Janice following that meeting, and she just clarified, or wanted the board to be aware that the position that we were all discussing, and I think some questions came up when we started talking about what's mandated and what's not mandated. And she did clarify with me after that meeting that that service was mandated. So-
It was mandated.
Was mandated.
By state?
Yes.
But it's paid for by the state?
There's different portions of grants.
There's four grants that pay for it. Correct me if I'm wrong, man. The, the major portion of it, like 48 or 58% of it, is funded by, I can't remember the name of the grant, but the grant is Strong Foundations Grant. And that, that is effective until 20, end of 2027. And they're, and it's anticipated, or it will be renewed, but it, so, that's, that's just a little bit on that. Is there anything else you wanted? Okay. That was one of the Partnership for Health things that I was waiting for.
Yeah. So, I just, I just wanted to bring that, since we've been talking about what's, what's mandated and what's not mandated, so that you were aware of that.
Phil, did you get your list of mandated positions? I'll take a copy of that, too, when you get in.
Yes. The next item I have is, this was brought back again before you for further discussion from our last meeting. And I did include in your packet a copy of the modified personnel policy from, I believe, when I modified it. It was either in '22 or '23, when I first came into the HR role. And that was just more for your reference. So, just for history, when I came into the position, all positions came before the board for review and for, in order to fill any, whether they would, were new positions or budgeted positions. We moved away from that up until recently, where if positions that were currently budgeted, and they were filling, and they were open due to a resignation, or a termination, or a retirement. So, this was, I was asked to, again, put this back on the agenda for discussion. And again, we moved away from this policy recently, with the idea of, with budget cut- we moved away from this policy recently with the idea of, with budget cuts and such, that the board may want to review these more, more in-depth at the board level. So this is up again for whether or not there wants, if, if the board so chooses to leave as is of how it was decided the last time, or to revert back to the policy that was in place prior.
Mr. Chair, I think the key is that we clarified that they can be put out for advertisement immediately, but then still come through the board. So I don't think there's a lag in, I don't think it delays the process when you can advertise for it, so.
Well, I, I've, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I feel like we made a mistake by bringing every hire in front of us here. We have, we're on each committee, we have commissioners on each committee, they can be discussed there. I do agree, Barry, if there's no funding, if the funding changes, we should look at that. If, if something changed with the money, we should look at it. Otherwise, we have people to do these jobs, and when it does get delayed, everything was delayed before. When I came here, we had a big problem retaining employees, we had unhappy employees, it was a mess, and these, I believe that this was not the whole reason for that, but part of it. And I, I think that we can't just, although we're, we're doing so much better by retaining employees and, and hiring now, I don't want to go backwards from where, go back to where we were, because that costs money. Every time you have to retrain somebody, it's, it's stress on the, the people who are, who are working with those people, so, you know, when I look at private business, I know, Barry, you don't agree with that, but when I look at them, they're, they're not trying to fill a full-time position with two-part-time positions. They're trying to get somebody good in that position and keep them there, and that's, that's how everything runs along smoothly. So with, with the stress it's going to cause on our, on the people doing it, I mean, if we start to lose employees again and then we're rehiring, then all these people are working overtime to, to keep up with what's going on. And so employee retention is, I think, a big deal, and I want to make a motion to, to go back to where we were, with the exception that if there's a loss in funding, we should look at it. We should all talk, and we should, the department head should be aware of what's going on in our state and in our country, and if, if they, you know, they should be able to look at this and make sure if they need a new employee, they can certainly talk to the people on the committee about it. There's a lot of ways to do it other than sitting them here in front of the, the public and interrogating them. I, I think that's the wrong way to do this. So I'd like to make a motion to go back to the way we were doing it before, with the exception, if there is a loss in funding. I know when we looked at some new positions in the attorney's office and in Mary's office, they had to go through quite a lengthy process to prove that they needed these employees, and I thought that that was a really good way to do it. It's not something that I'm qualified to do, but that's how we did it, and she did the work, and, and so that's, I think there's a process for, for all of this, and, but I don't, I don't believe it's mine.
So, so Richard, you have a motion that...
I'd like to make that.
So your motion would be to go back to the way we, the policy change we made previously, go back to that policy change, or back to the way the policy is in our policy manual, correct?
With the exception...
With the except, so, so here's, okay, so the motion would be, we would go back to the way we had it previously in the personnel policy, with the exception of the funding changes, that it be reviewed by the, the board. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second, do, by, motion by, uh, Richard, second by Erica, do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I know I was asked by Commissioner Hanson to provide this example, too, with this hiring, just for clarification, if I may. For example, if you have a position, and we just had this scenario, if you have like a temporary seasonal person and you want to move that to a permanent part-time position, that, then it would also be applicable to bring those positions back to the board.
That would be a new position.
Basically, anytime you have a status change within a position as well. So I just wanted to clarify.
Is that, is that okay with the motion, or?
And we did, we did discuss it.
Okay.
I, I, yep, I just wanted to make that clear.
I think that's like a clarification, that that would be considered a new position, so it would fall...
A status change.
But it's in the budget.
Not for it to be...
If, if there's a status change, it would be a different budgeted.
So I want to look at new positions also, Barry.
So are you looking at, are you looking at any seasonals? Is that's in the budget, they don't come to board?
Well, not if we've been, not if they're the regular seasonals that we hire every year to work on our highways, if they're the ones...
If they don't pass committee?
If they don't pass committee.
If they don't pass committee, if we're not happy with it, we...
So my, so I'm just, I'm giving you the example. My committees, if I say I'm not supporting this to move forward, is it dead, or do they have the option to come to the board for discussion then? It could work in the reverse, too. So you want to talk about stress at commit, at department heads. If I'm on a committee and I say, no, I do not support this, hiring this seasonal person because we are in difficult times, it's dead. That's how, that's how you want it.
Well, I thi, I think what we need to see is having those conversations at the committee level. I, I, I depend on those commissioners that are at the committee. They know those committees better than what I, as the board, do, so if...
I don't necessarily agree with that all the time. That a committee member would know better than anyone else. I, I don't know that that's true.
They should, you're, you know, the commissioner on that committee should know better than, than somebody who's not sitting on the commission, on that committee, having the conversation. If you're not, because that's where a lot of conversations take place, and they're a lot easier discussed at the committee level than they are here in front of us.
But I do, I do think that we need to have more conversations at the committee level, which...
Right.
Be, as a result of this, like, I, I think that we agree with Richard that we go back to this with the understanding that there needs to be more conversation at the committee level, that when there's a, a change in, you know, we're, we're, somebody has resigned and we're back, we're wanting to replace them, that they, the understanding is that they've gone through all of the steps of, is this needed, is the funding changing, all of those steps that we would look at to, to make sure, and we have those conversations at the committee level.
I have a question. So in the past, Barry and Richard, if someone, if a committee did not approve a hire, did that department head have an option to bring it to board, or was it not, I, I don't know?
I would say that, that they still could bring it to board.
I think they're taking their chances.
Yeah, they're probably, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me and Phil just went through this at Environmental. He wanted a position, we, we didn't think that we should hire that position. And as I mentioned more than once at, at Environmental, I'm not, I don't want, I, I, I want to keep our employees, if we have to have a new employee, then it should go through the process that Mary went through and our attorney went through, if, if it is. If it's a seasonal position and we're working on roads, you know, I guess if, 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 I don't know how you would say that if, if you were really against it and it was your committee, we stopped it right there. It never, it didn't get any further than our committee because we weren't supporting it, and I think that that's a good way to do it. If they want to get up in front of here, then I think you could, I don't know, I, I, you know, I just don't want to go through what we're, I don't want to go back to where we were.
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I, I think if you have a committee that's very liberal and have two very liberal people that aren't, that are willing to spend more or willing have different values, it certainly is going to be, your committee assignments will be, I mean, there will be departments that want someone on their committee and don't want someone else. If I, if I'm, if I'm scrutinizing every purchase and every, every hire, even if it's budgeted, I mean, it's, it's different today than it was last year. I mean, our, our forecast is a whole lot different in the next four years than it was two years ago. We are looking at significant expend, or fu, funding shifts from the state. I mean, we're not talking, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, we're talking millions and millions of dollars shifted to Becker County taxpayers, and I think you're not doing a service to your taxpayers if you're not reviewing every per, every position today, that's going to cost us tomorrow. So I think we should, I mean, I, I see most of these positions are worthy, and I don't think there's a lot of need. I mean, I, I look at the administrative assistant position coming up, human service is going to be taxed more. I mean, we have more things coming down to them, so this is a position that I'm like, yeah, they're gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to have that, because we're gonna, the need is gonna be there, because we're gonna have more employees, I think, at human services, and I think she's, she's gonna have to come and explain those, and we're, we see it coming, but if there's, there's positions out there that, yeah, I think we can do without, I think we can do without this person because of this. I think those are the discussions that I would like to have this board, whether it's in your committees or my committees, and that's what this does. And I think if, if things turned around and, and we're back financially and we're looking at three, four percent levy increase annually, I, I think we can go back to business as usual, but I think we're in times right now that there is so much uncertainty. Another set of eyes on hires is, is only doing what I think our taxpayers would want us to do. That's my opinion, and I, and I respect the, the other side, too. So I think it's just a matter of if, what the five of us want to do. I think it'll be a split vote for, for sure, and, and the wishes of the board will prevail, and we, whoever, whichever way this goes, I'll support it, so.
Mr.?
I, I, I think I have all the same concerns as you do, Barry, when it comes to, to new positions, but I think understanding, getting, you know, maybe we all need a list of those positions that are mandated and what those positions are, so that we make, we're making educated decisions at the committee level. I just think we need to depend on our department heads because they know best what their needs are and what, what the requirements of that position are, where that funding is coming from. So I think, I agree with you that we have conversation, I just think we have that conversation at the committee level of, and as we're moving forward with budgeting, you know, for next year, you know, we, we look, I think we can still look at every position.
The best time, the best time to eliminate a position is when it's vacant. I don't, if you, I mean, I think we all agree with that. You don't want to have to terminate an employee. So when a position comes vacant, that's when you really, really look at, is this something? Now, if we're going to just rely on department heads, they, they certainly could come to the board and explain and justify that position just as well as a committee, and if you have two board members here supporting that and justifying all those things, it helps that department head get that through, because you have two supporting members explaining, yes, this is why, this is why. It's an easy process, you have two board members up here supporting you. And, and I don't think, I don't think anyone wants to attack our department heads or supervisors, but I do, I do think the scrutiny, we're at a time where that's, that's needed. Again.
And that's your opinion, my opinion is that, that we, the people we put in place to do the jobs, do them. I'm not, I, I know that I'm not qualified to sit here and decide whether they need somebody or not. I know that. I'd have to, I'd have to be a lot more depth than just questioning them. I want to put some faith and trust in them, make them feel that they're, they're important. I'm not going to sit and, it's micromanaging is what it is to me, and it's not done anywhere else but here. This is the only place.
Oh, I don't agree with that.
Well, if you go, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, Barry, I talked to business owners, I did it last time, I even have letters from them. I talked to business owners, successful business owners with lots of employees who actually pay the wages. These guys pay the wages. And I talked to Kenny Foltz last week about micromanaging and how he, and like you, and like me, too, I have a hard time keeping my fingers out of stuff sometimes, but a lot of times, it's the correct way to do it. Hire the people, get good people, keep good people, let the process work through these people. That's, that's the way it's done there, and they're not doing it. They're doing it to save money. That's the way they're, they're doing it, and, and so I guess that's all I got.
So I think we, we have a motion and a second. Or I believe we're done discussing, is that, can we say that? We didn't time to vote. Okay, so we have a motion by Richard and a second by Erica. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
All right. Motion carry, uh, motion carries, four to one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If, if, if it carried, I don't think you, if it's not a roll call, then it's just say carried.
Okay, okay. All right. Sorry. That might be the first time I've done that, so.
So if I question that, I would, I would ask for a roll, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then you just say carried, because then you don't have to worry about the numbers.
There, there is one thing in the current personnel policy, there's a couple grammatical errors.
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. So I would assume you could just fix those.
Yes, I will fix those.
Okay. All right, next item. Carrie?
Yes, I'm going to ask Cody to come up in case there's questions. This was in your packet, Resolution 1E, with regards to the Childcare Economic Development Grant and acceptance of that grant. Request is for approval of that resolution. I don't know if there's questions.
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a motion to approve 1E.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Erica, a second by Richard, do we have any discussion?
I, Mr. Chair, can you explain, can you explain it first?
So motion and discussion, is it?
It was a motion and a second.
But isn't discussion supposed to be among the board members, or we can bring Cody in to discuss that?
Yep.
We can?
Yeah, I requested him.
Okay, all right.
So this was a result from our application back in November 2024 for the Childcare Economic Development Grant proposal through Minnesota, the Department of Economic, Employment and Economic Development. We're excited to just be one of the 25 organizations that were awarded this grant, that'd be through counties, cities, nonprofits, throughout the entire state. And about half of the grant money, we were approached by an organization in town for the expansion, retrofitting of their current facility to add another space for additional staff members and additional childcare slots, and then the remaining portion, about the other half of it, will go to grants to childcare providers with startup costs, licensing costs, assistance for that sort of stuff, so.
How much is it?
A hundred and twenty thousand.
Where does the match come from?
Yeah, explain them.
From the private entity that they have, that's their matching funds, so it's the representation of the entire project contribution, but their, their matching funds are up to seventy thousand dollars of what they have currently.
One thing I noticed in the, in the contract is it's prevailing wage, so are they aware of that?
Yep, yep. Yeah, there's some triggers in there with the contract, depending on the amounts and stuff for prevailing wages and stuff like that, but it's a reimbursable grant, so everything would flow through to us for approval, and then we would submit it to the state for reimbursements and stuff like that.
I just want to point out that it was, there was prevailing wage in some of those cases where, if you're not familiar with that, you might get stuck with it after the fact if you're a private...
Yep, yep, it's pretty common with most of the state grants.
Yeah, I, I had the same two questions, so. Any further discussion? Okay, we have all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody.
Thank you.
All right, Carrie.
The next item I have was for a discussion for the board. There's been some discussion about how we run our meetings and where we can do motions and which act, which items are action, which are informational only. I did look at some different agendas at different counties and different cities of kind of, everyone does it a little bit differently, which is what I was expecting. But I know this last meeting, too, there was some discussion about a motion during your board reports and whether or not that should be appropriate and what's on the agenda and when you should modify the agenda, et cetera. So I wanted to bring this before you, and I know Commissioner Hanson has some information that you probably want to provide as well. Sorry, put you on the spot.
I more wanted answers about, you know, action items, I mean, we get a hundred and sixty pages of stuff to go through. I wanted to know, you know, what are we going to make decisions on, and what's just FYI kind of stuff, so, I mean, to help me be better, better prepared, that was the impetus for like this conversation. What are action items and what, what aren't?
The, the, the big issue for me was, is when are we going to take action, like Phil's saying, do we, are, are we going to allow us to take action during our reports, or are we just going to allow us to take action during items that are on the agenda? Now, the reports are on the agenda, but we have at times done action items during reports, and we have at times not done action items, so we have to decide. I think we need to be consistent with what...
I don't, I don't know that we've ever done action items under reports, under reports.
I, I thought we had, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Mr. Chair, at the first thing we do after the Pledge of Allegiance is we confirm the agenda.
Yeah.
If we're going to be adding something, motion second and pass something, I mean, that's pretty significant. If we said this... If we said this was gonna be our agenda, then we'd do something different.
That.
Does that make sense?
It, it a hundred percent.
Yeah, makes sense.
Does. If there's, if there's incidentals, we will, we, I mean, in the past, we've added items to the agenda for action, you know, during the meeting, but they're incidentals, they're, they're not controversial or they're not.
Or time sensitive.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, so I think there's exceptions to the rule, but if, I mean, it's nothing that would be, I, I think Nate can probably, we've never had action, we've never added action items that have been significant on the day of that would cause debate or, or, or lack of trust or transparency from the board. I think that's the key. You gotta, you want everyone to know what, what you're doing.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, yes, that's exactly what I was looking, I, and I've, I've done those in township meetings, too. They weren't significant, the public would not be impacted by them, but I just wanna make sure we're all on board with how we're doing this process.
So then, so then if we have an incidental issue that comes up in the reports, we could add that down on the agenda, or we've already approved the agenda, so.
We add it later, even.
We, we add it later, so we're, so we're not gonna make any action items in any of our reports. We would, if we want something, we'd have to move it down later on in the agenda.
We used to, I mean, the commissioners' reports, we've never, never had an action item.
Okay.
If we, if there's something in there, you can add it at the appropriate time in the, you know, you can add it to the agenda, but it's not during reports, it's usually under auditor, NRM, you know?
Yeah.
It's something that, that you could add, but we also used to run through, run through things through finance. If they were through finance and they were action items, we used to run everything through finance and action, and that was, it wasn't as easy to follow if you're, I'm sure Nate, to follow action items through finance that get approved the day before, recommend to approve that day. And then we'd just pull them off finance, finance agenda and approve them, which was probably not the best way to, not the most transparent way to do that. So I, I like it better now that they're not, I mean, it's very rare we have an item in, in the finance report that's, that's approved during, we used to, we used to have to go through the full finance agenda and you authorize all of them. I mean, you, there is four or five motions within finance.
Mr. Chair, the, the, an easy way to solve this, I think, would be to get rid of the agenda confirmation as our first action item, or we approve the agenda, we vote on it. If we don't have that, then, or would that be not transparent?
I don't think that's, I think you have to, if there's any changes to your agenda, I, I don't think if your agenda does not change, you do not have to make a motion to approve it, because it hasn't changed, it's been published and changed. But if you modify it at the day, then you have to amend it for that change. But I technically don't think if it's been published and approved, or you don't have to approve your published agenda. If it changes, you do.
So.
But we always make a motion to approve it.
So if we, if we would like to, if we, we, we make a motion and approve the agenda and it's, and with no changes, then we come back later on in the meeting and we want, can we still, then can we amend the agenda again?
It defeats the purpose of approving the agenda before we start. We're telling the public what we're gonna work on for the day, and then mid, so let's say they, they're watching and they shut off the TV, and then midway through it, we change that? And Barry, you, you said that none, nothing is of significance, and it's, I don't know if it's timely or not, but it's appropriate at the time. I mean, I don't know, I just think we need to do something here just to be.
I, I think the way we've done it is approve the agenda with any changes or as it's published. And then, again, this is rare, and it's usually a discussion item or, or something that just pops up for some reason.
Yeah.
And we've acted on, we, but usually you add, you make amend, amend it to add it to your discussion or your agenda, even if it's in the agenda, and then, then make a motion to approve. Again, these are, I wouldn't do that with anything of any significance that people, that there would be even a debate amongst commissioners, or usually it's just a housekeeping item that was somehow forgotten wherever it was, but.
But I do, I do think that it should be on the agenda if we're gonna take action on it.
Well, that's the, that's the appropriate way. There's no question about it.
If it was.
Go ahead.
If it was a, if it was, if it wasn't inappropriate, why would we need to take a motion, or if it wasn't a big deal, why would we be taking a motion in a second? I mean, that, those are big deals, discussion, and we act on it.
I can't think of any examples of that, but.
Maybe we can all kinda look at this and then bring it up at the next meeting again. I don't know, I, that just stuck out to me as we were going through these meetings.
One of them might be a, a meeting time, you know, we forgot that we wanna meet for a road tour, you know, in, in, in five days or ten days rather than.
Yeah.
Or, you know, just.
We actually did that at our last road tour.
I mean, oh, we forgot, we forgot this. It's not even significant meeting, I mean, it's, those are the type of things, or, or, I don't know, recognition, you know, we're, let's, oh, we forgot, we didn't add recognition of Veterans Day, you know, or maybe you have a proclamation you wanna add it to the agenda and approve a, a declaration or a resolution supporting something, you know, that has, again, it's, it certainly is nothing that you would want to have the public come back and say, why didn't, why wasn't this on the agenda? I mean, you certainly would avoid anything that would, people would come back and question you on, so.
Mr. Chair, just one last note on this. I mean, when I was reviewing some other agendas and, and how other entities do this, I mean, some go as far as to, behind the item, put discussion-only action item. I mean, if you want to go to that level, we sure can, but I'm not hearing that.
I don't think we do, because if it's on the agenda, I think we might want, we might wanna have the capabilities of having an action.
Mr. Chair, I, I would very much like that. This is an action item, I'm gonna review it, I'm gonna call Cody and see we're gonna, if I knew that, and maybe I'll get into that as the time goes on, but right now, this is a long agenda, there's a hundred and sixty pages.
These are the shortest agendas that we've had for years.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think.
This is nothing.
Agenda, and people come.
Yep.
You know, and, and then they gotta come back again, you know? So that's maybe why we, if we're gonna put it on there, we should be able to act if we, you know, I don't know, I.
I think what, what makes more sense to me is for, to assume that if it's on the agenda, it's an action item. If a department head or somebody is bringing something forward for discussion, then maybe we caveat it that this is a discussion and not an action item, but.
The reverse is what you're saying.
Yeah, like, I don't think we need to identi, I think it's safe to say that if it's on the agenda, we're likely taking action on it, so.
Right, and perhaps with whomever's presenting the information, too, it would be the responsibility to, or to present to the council what their recommendation is for you all.
I mean, I think there are times where we have, you know, a department head or somebody coming in to, to just give us information. It's, we, it's not anything we have to act on, and we have at times, so we need to make an, a motion to.
As you discuss it.
Yeah.
To discuss it, but it's not necessary. So I think if it's on the agenda, it's, it's likely an action item.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I'm looking at the agenda. Commissioner Jepson, I mean, Becker Bay Auction, item six, donations due by March 7th. That is not an action item. I, I, I don't know what's an action item and what isn't a lot of times. The Consent Agenda, you know, we're approving that like it's just regular business. I, I get that. But there are things on this, the, the appointments, we've always got appointment by commissioners on there. Today, we had an ETA, committee appointment. I get that. They aren't all action items on here, is what I'm saying. They're reminders and.
Yep, so in, that's what I'm saying, in that instance, then, let's make note of it that that's a discussion item, not an action item.
That would help me. And maybe in a year, then I'll know, like the rest of you guys do.
I just think it's a.
But I wanna be, you know, I wanna be clear, too, that if, even though it says discussion item, there could be an action item that comes from that discussion, so we better be able to make that action.
Which is what we just talked about, right?
Yeah.
I think if it's on the agenda, it's an action item, and you'll, you'll learn that.
That Becker Bay Auction is just a.
I mean, you'll, you'll, you'll get in, you'll look at all those things.
All right, we can move on.
Yep, let's go. Um, Carrie, we have another.
I do.
Party report.
Uh, yes. So in your packet, you have a copy of the Resolution 1A. There was a meeting with the chair and the vice chair with regards to the recorder's salary and following the statute that indicates that the salary shall be set by the board. So what you have in the packet is the resolution, and I would request a motion to approve this. I, with a caveat that there was some modif, some slight modifications and clarification in the language, so I would ask when the motion is made that I am able to modify. It doesn't change the content, it's just the wording.
The wording.
The wording.
It was a bit of a struggle getting this because we were using language from appointed positions and also elected and trying to mesh them together.
And I would comment on this motion, it is the current, it is currently where, there's no change from where the recorder's position would be at on, on the scale also, or the recommendation from the EDA. So we have a, we have a motion to approve 1A.
DDA.
D, or, sorry, DDA.
And perhaps it might be helpful, I, I do want to emphasize that, you know, there was a lot of discussion about this position. And, you know, the old system and the old band and grade system of how this was graded and, and where this position came in. And this was one of those positions that we found as we moved into our new pay structure that was way underfunded. So, I mean, it came in, so when this position then was regraded onto the new DDA scale, it landed at the bottom because it was so underfunded. So I, I just, and again, there was a lot of discussion about that.
We had a lot of discussion, yes.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve this resolution.
Resolution.
325, 1A, the recorder salary.
See, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on 1A.
Mr. Chair.
Any discussion, yes?
Yes, I mean, I, and I think what's important here, this is an annual, and I think Carrie mentioned that this, this was underfunded.
Yes.
Significantly with, with the scale. I, I truly think that, I hope next year we take another look. I mean, this is an annual, so, and we can, just so where, what, where it came in, when it slid over, I think that was the, for this newly appointed slash old elected position. So, you know, next year, next year, this can be reviewed again to see where, where, if it's, if it's appropriate to look at it.
Correct.
So.
And that, that was part of our, that was part of our discussion.
Yep, and you mean for DDA to look at it again?
Well, I think.
I mean, we look at it no matter what, because it's.
Yeah, I think you just, I think you go through the whole gamut and look at what's appropriate for this position. I mean, because this is a department head leader, so.
Yep.
And then also to, I'd like to also say that this will be done before the first of the year next year.
Yes, in a timely way.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Go ahead, Carrie.
So the last item that I have is, it's not an action item, it's just a very strong reminder. I'd say that for you, Commissioner Hanson, because Peggy sneaks this in on us to make sure that we're all aware of our Becker Bay Auction and.
On your stuff.
Yes, the collection of items for this. And just for anybody out in the public, this is, and we've said this before, but this is a, an annual, an annual thing that the county does, and all the items are donated either by commissioners or employees, and all the money raised is donated to our local food pantry with the goal of two thousand and twenty-five dollars.
Mm-hmm.
It correlates with the year that we're in.
I just turned in my auction items today. I feel proud of myself.
You got some good stuff.
I'll find you.
I'll find you. Any, any discussion on Becker Bay at all? Okay, we do have one more item under Carrie's, number three, the Consent Agenda, we pulled that out. So Mary, would you come up and?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll just give you my point real quick.
Yes.
I, the concern I have is the, the restriction of someone between, under 21, to being able to own a business and not being able to get a license. Is that a county?
That's a state law.
That's a state law?
That's a.
That was my question. I just wanna make sure that we're not being more restricted, because I, I think if you're a 20-year-old that wants to buy a business and you wanna sell the product, you should be just as allowed to, someone 20. That was my concern, but if that's state law, we can't do anything about it. So I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, do we have, we have a motion for 1B, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries.
And I just have a quick question in regards to.
Are you on the agenda?
Should all, well, should all resolutions be not on consent? Because I, that's what I struggled with. I wasn't sure if this should have gone on regular.
The question, the.
We've had that.
The question be, 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 we've had before is resolutions, almost what we've heard, what I've heard before, and everything, it changes all the time, that all resolutions should have a vote on themselves and have a, all the, all the members have to express how they voted. I mean, that's, but I don't, I don't know, Carrie, that's, that's a position.
We've had, we've done, we've had that discussion before, and we've done it both ways. I, I don't know.
But if I take a look, and I'll give you an answer next time.
I mean, because resol, I, resolutions are supposed to have an individual.
Individual.
That's what I was told, I mean, that's what we were told once, but we went away from it, and we were said, no, this is good, I'm like.
Yeah, and I think it was looked at again, so.
But, Mr. Chair, this, this item right here, we have someone who has been in a department for a long time asking if it should be on the consent or not. I, as a new commissioner, am saying, is this gonna be something that we're going to have to take individual action on? I didn't know if you were gonna pull this out. I looked at it, I'm like, uh, you know, I, I don't know, if it's on the consent agenda, that means it should be non-controversial. I mean.
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Consent agenda is just regular, run-of-the-mill stuff. It, there's, it shouldn't be controversial if it's on consent. Now, if you have a question on it and pull it out, I get that, but still, are we gonna have debate on that? I, that, that, that's where I'm coming from.
And I think the stance in the past on consent agenda is that it lands there, and you always have the option to pull it off.
Right.
You want to throw the discussion. But I think the, the bigger question is whether or not we should be taking individual action on each resolution, I think is your question.
Yeah, that, that's.
Yeah, that's the question.
I, I will ask the question and make sure that we are doing it correctly.
And, and there's five of us that look at the consent agenda, so there could be five different opinions. That's why we wanna have the option to pull it out.
And that's what I meant by controversial, that, yes, typically, things that are not controversial would not be on the, the consent agenda just because we wanna be transparent, but that doesn't mean that we won't have questions that we ask to have it pulled.
Right, correct. Mr. Chair, but, but we need to be giving clear direction to our department heads, too, about what's gonna be on and what's not gonna be on. That's. That's.
Yeah, and usually what'll happen is we'll get asked the question whether or not, and I'll review it, and if I believe it goes on consent, then it goes on.
And I, and I think we have done some of that in committees, and, and we also have done some of that in finance, too.
And I, and I believe that department heads have been told that if your, if your item gets pulled off of the consent agenda, be prepared to.
Correct.
Come during your report.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Chair, and I think Carrie knows my opinion, I don't like consent agenda for very many things, because it doesn't give us any discussion. It's just, just like the employees, we don't learn. I mean, this is time for us to get more educated and learn about the county's business. We just consent agenda or don't ask questions. You know, we could put everything under consent, we'll come in for 10 minutes and I make a motion to approve, okay, when we walk out. That's not our job. We have, you have to know what things are about, and, and I have a, I have more history than obviously you, so I understand them quite a bit better, but for you guys not to, not to question things and not to say, hey, why is, why is the recorder's fund down so much? What money came out of that? I mean, we didn't have that question because consent agenda, go, go ahead. It's, I mean, just those things, I mean, even, even hires, you don't, you won't get the information if, if, now, if Denise doesn't come in and explain this now about this position, what this position, this position does. We used to have department heads and supervisors come in all the time, explain this. Now we're just, it's just pushed, these, these agendas, our time spent here is nothing compared to what it used to be. We are, and, and it hurts you as a commissioner for how much you know about the different departments that aren't your committees, or, so, that's, that's the reasoning, I think. I, I like more discussion. I could, I, and I love county government. I love these discussions that we have with Mary saying about recorder's funds, I mean, they're complex, this is, there is so much, you will never know everything about this county, ever. But if you don't have these department heads and supervisors educating at every meeting and every committee, and AMC, MRC, your district meetings, those are things you should be going to, to learn about this. New commissioner meetings, when you have it, a chance, take advantage of those, because you learn more about county government than, than sitting here for five minutes, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I mean, you just described me. Seriously, I mean, I, I don't know what I don't know, but I do know that consent agenda should be regular business. If there's something you want to pull, I'm always interested in what you say, but you've got 20-year head start on me, and I don't know these things. If there's a way I can be helped along, I'm certainly willing to listen and learn and.
Okay, we'll move on. Mary, Otter Treasure.
Did we vote on the last?
Did you vote on?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Resolution 325-1D is for 4H summer support staff.
We did, yeah.
We didn't vote.
Oh, hold on, Mary.
Okay.
Didn't, we voted on the tobacco.
We did a motion and second, we were in discussion.
We did, and they were in discussion.
I thought you, I thought we all, okay, we have a motion and a second, I thought we already voted.
No, I don't think so.
So we have a motion and a second for 1D. No, not 1B.
1BB.
1B. One, okay, all in favor of 1B signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, Mary.
Okay, resolution 325-1D is for 4H summer support staff. This is to assist with the fair, it is a budgeted position.
Do we have a?
We don't have, we don't have to motion now, because we, it's a budget item, it's regular, we, we, if the new motion, new policy's in place, we don't even have to vote on this, do we?
These, these ones, the summer ones and the, the seasonal ones, I think we decided we wanted to do.
That's not the way we decided in the motion.
We're going to kick it to the committee.
If the committee, if committee approved it, so. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a second for 1D?
I second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Tierra, no, I'm sorry, Human Services, Denise, I skipped over.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. We have a couple items, the first of which I don't think we need to, and have a vote on any longer due to the previous decision, is that correct?
I, I, that is correct, but I think since it's on the agenda, we.
I would say since it's on the agenda, I think you.
We will today, yes.
Okay. We have a personnel request then for a full-time administrative assistant due to a resignation. You should have the document in front of you, and I think I do. Here we go. On the cost analysis, the cost analysis for the initial year, or this current year, is a increase of $7,344, and next year, $17,782. Just to point out, this cost analysis is at step 10 again, so this is the worst possible case, just in case we get a qualified candidate that would come in at step 10. This position is a key position that assists myself as the director, the office support supervisor, and supervisors for clerical duties, including confidential duties such as human resources.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I think obviously we need this position, but I'm curious on the, what, what, what step are we on currently, on the current position?
I believe it's two.
Step two?
Step two.
Yeah.
Correct.
A couple things in past, now, this is past, you know, is we used to not hire until the severance pay, is this, severance pay is the $7,000 difference? Or did you?
There is no severance in this case.
Or, or did you put, is that, is the replacement for current costs versus cost to fill, is cost to fill 25, is that step 10?
Correct.
Okay. And you anticipate, what, what do you anticipate the hiring to be at, what step?
We just won't know, that's why we, at Human Services, we've always in the past done the cost analysis at step 10, because we just won't know until we have the applicant pool and.
What are your?
The applicant, what the experience.
What lanes are your other employees in that same, in that same job description?
There is no.
The step.
There's one position in this job, job description.
If I may, I, I think, you know, in the past, I think there was probably a lot more variance in where people came in on steps, just because of how our pay structure was. I think what I'm seeing more so is entry-level positions are coming in on the low end.
Well, that's kind of my concern.
Correct.
And how we move forward. I don't think we should, I think when positions are rehired, existing commit, existing should not be budgeted at step 10. I think if, if you want to, if there's a case, I, I think that has to, I mean, I would be very upset if we hired a step 10 employee to fill as a, as a new employee.
And, and I think you're right, and I, to be honest, since we've started in the new pay structure, I'm not aware of any positions that have come in at the top.
I mean, a step 10 would be somebody that comes in with 10-plus years of administrative assistance experience.
And I don't even think we would even, to be honest, I don't think we would even start at that level.
I can just add, when I was figuring out the numbers, it's also in, taking into consideration any current employees that may want to apply for this position, that already have county experience, as like an office support position, may want to come into this role. I have several employees who've been here for a long time, so that would be something that would be taken into consideration, where they wouldn't necessarily come in at the bottom if they were, you know, considered for this position, just because of their experience.
Yeah, and when I said what I said, I was thinking more external coming in, not.
But even, even internal, external, I have an issue with step budgeting or having full leeway at step 10. I think, I think if you go step 10, it has to be an exceptional person that should have more than just, I should just, shouldn't be an automatic hire. I think, I think administration should review that then before, I mean, I think you have leeway up to a certain five or six, but I think you go into those other years, it should be then another approval, should go and, I don't, it's just difficult for me to budget a step 10 on a new employee when you have current.
That's kind of the worst case.
If I could, yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, we're not, we're not budgeting at a step 10, we're saying, we're showing this cost analysis at a step 10, we'll have the hiring done by the time the next budget, by the time we have to set the budget, we'll know what step that position is at, and we'll set it at that.
Oh, I'm, I'm well aware of that.
It's just kind of the worst, this is how bad it could be.
That's correct. And we, we have done that in the past, and it probably did have to do with the prior step, but we, we always showed the worst-case scenario in the event that we do have a, that did have an educated and experienced position that we did place at step 10, then if we had it at, if we just put it at step 5, then we'd have to come back and ask for the additional step, so we, we just eliminate that.
Well, I think if you're asking, I'm going to interpret that like this, what we approved today, this would still have to come before us, because you're not within your budget. Your, your cost overrun to fill this year, you are over, if you hire, your possible cost is over $7,000 more than what you budgeted.
If you were to hire at step 10, that's the thing.
Correct. So.
The decision was if we, if we are, if we lose funding for the positions.
If it's not, if it's not funded, or not budgeted.
If it's not, if it exceeds the budget, I think that, if, so if it exceeds the budget at, what, what, $3,000, then you can approve, is that correct? Or is it $2,000? If it's five?
I don't, I think that's, that's for purchases, it's not for.
Yeah, it is for purchases.
So, so anything above a step 2, because that's what this position is currently budgeted for, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs.
I think we are too.
Yeah. I think if there's, and there's a gap there, there's funding.
There should be some kind of, we certainly don't want to lose a, a good hire over a couple thousand dollars, I'm going to tell you that, that's how I feel about it. So I don't know how we, who, do you look at these, who decides the step?
It depends on the department. I would say, I'll speak, since we're speaking about Human Services, I'll speak to them. The communication is, goes through our human resources, and the, and you have ongoing conversations with the director there, and discussion if they want to start anything beyond a step 1 incoming, and they come to an agreement. If they don't come to an agreement, then it'll come to me.
The way, the way I look at it is if you, if your hire isn't for a month, then that, then that funding gap for this current budget year is, is eaten up, so there's no budget gap. So, but if you hire, if you have an overlap, when, you know, a lot of people want to hire and have three-month overlap of employees, I don't think that, that is, that's not within the budget, that's not within that budgeted person, so that wouldn't be appropriate unless you had board approval.
So by overlap, you mean this position's retiring at the end of the year, we want to hire in October to train? Is that what you mean by overlap?
Well, yes, if you have two employees filling one position for, for training.
Yes, 100%.
I mean, that, that is not, that would happen.
Yeah.
But what this is, what we used to do is there's a shortfall, if there is a severance, that that severance would have to, you'd have to have a vacancy till that severance ran out, till you could be cash, so you're not running over your budget for that position. And you could say that if you're, if you hire at a step 6 instead of a step 3, it's pretty small, and it might not be, but if there's a two-week gap, there's not employee there, then that would be eaten up also. But I would like you to stay within the budget of that current year, and there's exceptions, of course. If it's beginning year, it, I think there should be an avenue to come and, and get that employee that you want, but, I mean, I, I think it's critical that we stay within budget.
Yep, and I, I would agree, and I would just add again, when we came and moved to the DDA scale, a lot of that was intended, so when you're hiring, you don't have that amount of variance when you're hiring.
Right.
Because it really should be in line with the market, and it, and you shouldn't have to adjust, you know, again, a little bit, perhaps if you have some experience, or if you have an internal transfer that's already been here 25 years or what have you, but it, it should be the exception and not the rule.
And there's creative ways, if you have someone internally, too, that if they're, you know, you have a gap with them, I mean, so they're, but I think we, we have to be aware of the budget, and it, you shouldn't be over-budget for that. And there's ways to do it, I mean, without losing who you want.
Yep, and I, and I would mimic that as well, and I think, I think the key of how this particular department is doing it is right on par, and they're having those communications with human resources, there's more than, you know, just their department on looking at that and, and looking at, in, as a, as a total package.
And I think if you historically look at the Human Services budget, they're consistently under-budget when it comes to their, especially when it comes to their wages.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Do we have a motion, Mary, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the full-time administrative assistant. Any further discussion?
And I don't want to make this part of the motion, but just, just make sure we're within budget, within the current year budget, however, if it's, and, and Carrie, I'm sure can help with that, so we know that.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I also think along with that lines of running the budget, I think that in our committees, we should figure out in our committees how we want to look at budgets more regularly. I don't think we.
Yep, yep.
The only, the only committee that I'm on that looks at the budget every time we meet is Transit. So I think we, no, I'm not saying we have to do it every meeting, but I think we should look at it maybe quarter, maybe at least quarterly, look at where are we, where are we at in our budget, our committee?
I just wanted, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say too, and I recently have had that discussion with the department heads, too, because I think we do need to be looking at budgets more regularly. So it's on their radar, I guess is what.
Mr. Chair, that, that would be something, since budgets are becoming a big issue, I think that's something that can be done monthly. You should have a dashboard, you should know where you're at within the year, budget to actual, these, all good organizations have stuff like that.
Yep.
Because of what, what I heard in this discussion here was, first of all, we voted earlier that we're going to let our department heads make this kind of decision. Now, as we discuss what just happened here, what I heard Barry say was, or Commissioner Nelson, budget is important, and it's going to be very important, and it should always be important, but we're going to leave the hiring to the department head. Did I hear that wrong, or did, is that what I heard there?
No, I just, just make sure you're within each employee's budget when you hire and relook, and, and if there's creative ways that you have to manipulate that, then, then that's what you should do. I mean, for example, that position's open for, for whatever, for two weeks, and, and many times they are, they're not filled immediately, but that would give you that extra room for that, for that budget, severance pay, or, or hiring at a higher step than what the old one was, would.
Okay, so let's go to the outstate travel request, Denise. Or training request, I'm sorry. Yes, Amanda. Amanda's the expert, she can explain everything, she explained it all to me, so.
Thank you, we're just revisiting this again from the last board meeting, and having further discussion after the P4H meeting was held last Friday, I believe, and some clarification was received.
Yes, so this out-of-state travel request, training request would be funded under our RSG Response Sustainability Grant. One of the priority focuses of this grant is to increase public health emergency preparedness capacity. So this was one of the national conferences that was written into the grant budget to focus on this work and give an opportunity for our emergency preparedness coordinator to attend this training, to have the opportunity to have more exposure to emergency preparedness, training, networking, big and small agencies, talking about some emergencies that we may not have, we may not have seen yet in Minnesota, that we could, just getting, expanding knowledge and exposure to that kind of training.
I think it's important, any time we have an emergency person, that they get the training that's offered to them. That jet that flipped over in Toronto, the wait, or the stewardess was credited with saving lives, and she had said that she had just finished her emergency training. And so I, I think we all can put ourselves in the position of having a child, or a friend, or anybody, and, and, you know, having trained people to help them in an emergency. So I think it's, I think it's good, it's a good thing, and, and we should send her down there for that training.
I, I agree with Richard, after, especially after going to my Partnership for Health meeting, where it was explained really well, and Amanda just explained it well, too, and I have, and, and the grant will pay for the entire process of sending that person, doing the training, paying their salary. I think it's for 44 hours, is that right? Is that what it was?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven hours, yeah. The grant will pay for that person, so.
What types of public health preparedness is, are they going to be providing resources on? Like just, are we talking like pandemics, or?
It's national, it's through the CDC and federal partners, so they're going to be doing case studies and just training that we have, we have looked to see if it's available at local, regional, or state level, this level of training, and we're told it's not.
Training for what, what, what type of emergency?
Natural disasters, pandemic, just different variety of emergencies.
I think one of the questions last time was why Otter Tail was not sending someone, and we did find out that the Otter Tail, that was a possibility, but that that individual could not make those time slots work.
Clay County, oh, sorry.
It was Clay County, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
And, yes, so, yeah, our Clay County Emergency Preparedness Coordinator will be on personal leave during that time.
Mr. Chair, is this part of our previous discussion? Will this, will these kind of things come before us, this board, all the time?
Out-of-state travel.
Out-of-state travel always does.
Always does.
Always does, yeah.
Unless it's, the exceptions are Fargo more, Fargo.
Yeah, Fargo.
Okay. I just, for me, I know the value of my training down with AMC, I know it was a cost of the county, but you're getting a better commissioner because of it.
Who's got elected? Oh, you're talking about you, I'm sorry.
I learned a lot down there, so it was very beneficial to me, and I hope that these trainings are of some, okay, so all training comes before the board?
Out-of-state training.
Okay, all right, I didn't know that.
Even if it's budgeted?
So do we?
Which we don't typically budget out-of-state, but this, this is a grant-funded. Correct.
Do we have a motion to approve the outstate training request?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Richard, second by Phil, do we have any discussion?
One last clarification, then. One last clarification then, so the 47 total hours, that's two days of 10 hours of travel time each, they're reimbursed to the, so all the hours are reimbursed for the employee also?
Correct.
So the employee gets paid for the whole, they're reimbursing, so we don't, we don't pay the salary, we get, we get reimbursed?
This will be invoiced to the grant, all the expenses, so we have to pay for the hotel, flight, we have to pay for it upfront and then we will invoice the grant and get reimbursed.
So this is actually a cost savings to Becker County, is that, are you saying? Because we will not be paying our employee any hourly wage through that whole conference?
Correct.
Yeah, this employee is funded under grant work, so.
So her, her wages are already?
Yes.
Paid for through the grant?
Yes.
They're not counting, so, so we wouldn't be seeing an extra cost savings and that we're not going to get reimbursed twice for her wage? This grant is already paying for her wage?
Yes, right now her FTE is funded under several different grants, yes, and RSG is one of them.
So the $4,125 for the total training cost does not include her wages?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
So do we have any more discussion? Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Denise and Amanda. Judy. Informational technology.
Good morning.
Morning.
Today I'm bringing forward a capital request for what's called the next generation 911, it's the last two phases. These phases, I believe, were added a few years ago and they are funded through a grant from, that is in the, that can be spent either on 911, 911 and the GIS part of 911, that's what this is about. What we're trying, what, what this is, is for the last two phases, the amount is for a total of $8,522.21, 41 cents. The majority of that goes to Pro West, who is our, is our GIS vendor that helps us get stuff accomplished when it's just too, when it's very, very, very technical. It was not in my budget because it is being paid for out of a grant and it was not in my five-year plan for the same reason. This is one of those few things that I think we're all glad when the, we get a mandate that then is actually funded. So are there any questions on exactly what we're doing here as far as what it's called NENA attributes? And the best way I think I can describe it, it's so when there's overlays between counties, that the pins are in the right spot, that all that stuff is done correctly. And so this, this is, all the counties in the state of Minnesota will, we will be able to say, yeah, we are, now we know where all those points are, all that kind of stuff. And so that's really what this does, and so it allows us to, I believe, have our 911 operations, no matter where they're, where they are, much, much better. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To me, this seems like 911, this seems like this should be coming under the public safety.
It is, that's where the grant is.
Yeah, that's where the grant is coming from, but it's technology, so.
Why isn't Todd said, oh?
Because it's technology, because the GIS system is under, is under the IT department.
And, and also too, the state added these two phases, seven and eight, and they also added more funding for these two phases.
One thing to point out on this, as I mentioned through the sheriffs, that, you know, dispatch is, this will, this will connect all counties and this, through the state as, through dispatch, so the points are the, you know, so it's, it's more systematic, is that correct word?
I think that's accurate, yeah.
So if, if we wanted to take on other counties dispatching, this would be more seamless then, so, so it will help that.
It could be like a regional?
Yeah, well, this makes it, we're trying to get it, it's trying to get statewide the same, so they can transfer, if everything is more easily, I don't know.
More transparent.
Yeah, well, yeah, and it's just, it's, it's just easier and, and it's the same systems then as we, as we go from county to county.
And then it's possible that larger counties could dispatch for smaller counties or vice versa, yes. So do we have a motion to approve the technology request?
Motion to approve the total of 8,522.41 for phase seven and eight.
Most, most by Barry, second by Erica, do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thanks Judy.
Thank you.
Thanks Judy.
Human Resources, Tiara.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in front of you, I have a policy addition, really it's a change to the current 5.0 policy, but in addition for the career ladders that we've been working on implementing with the job descriptions, as well as two contract addendums, one for, both for the Teamsters Courthouse Union and one for same implementing the career ladders into their contract, as well as adding in the positions to their salary schedules.
So I just have a question about this, so when there's a career ladder, the position gets posted, or is that just for the initial?
That is just for the initial, so we have to post it once and our business agent with Teamsters is in agreement to that. Because of the union contract having posting requirements, we do need to post initially for the seven days, but then after that initial posting, it'll ultimately be spurred by the department head once an employee meets all of the qualifications to make that advancement. The department head would be bringing it to myself, human resources director, the county administrator, and then the appropriate committee for approval. With what was just approved earlier in this meeting, I do have a question on if there is board approval needed or not, or if that should be getting scratched from the policy. So it's the last line of the first paragraph.
Well, I thi, I think if we're looking at a career ladder, would be something that would not be budgeted, because it would be more than just that's, that step, right?
I think it goes along with the status change too.
I think it's a status change, yeah.
Yeah. So I would say yes.
So leave it in there, okay?
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, I, I guess it could be budgeted if the department head headed it.
If it's ongoing then, if it stays the same from year to year, then, I mean, if employee stays in, it's annually, it wouldn't be brought back, well, they're not changing anything.
Yeah, they're not.
It would be just that initial.
Initial.
Go into the, but I'm, I'm still confused about the posting. So that, this is just now?
Correct, the first.
Like now because?
Once they get there.
They're new positions ultimately, so once the new position has been filled, the business agent and I are in agreement that we no longer have to post the positions because they won't be new positions at that time, it'll be advancement within a department.
It's really, if I may, it's a, really a promotion. So it's a status change and it's a promotion, and some of these, as we work through this, when we were implementing our, our salary structure and some of these career ladders that were approved at different committees, we did our best to get them into the budgets and we did pretty, pretty well. There were some that we maybe weren't expecting, so I would say the majority of these are in the budgets.
Oh, currently the more, the majority of them.
I, I, I anticipated this and did my best guess putting that into the budgets.
That, that's what I meant by saying.
I think as long as they're, as long as they're budgeted for and you're within that budget, then it's, then it doesn't need to come before the board as we, as we move forward. But if there's a, if you have a, if you want to, I think if you have a step two person that's going to be advanced to step three, and it's not budgeted at step three, then you probably would have to, but if you budget, if you want to do it at the, at January 1 and you put it in the budget, and, and we, and it's disclosed obviously to the board that we're adding a step three, you know, a ladder three or whatever, whatever the ladder is.
Yeah.
Then it's discussed at the budget setting of the board rather than, and then that wouldn't have to come before the board if it's in the budget in the new year. So these would probably take place if you're adding a step for some whatever reason, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of it once this gets established, but.
There are departments that do have multiple steps in the ladders, the assessor's office would probably be the best example of that, because there is the base trainee position, then there is the AMA, the CMA, the SAMA, and then the chief deputy.
I think the point is though, if they're, if they're budgeted for, if they start at the base and there's a budget for step two and then there's plan for them to go there, I don't think we need to see it. But if it, if they get to step three and it's not budgeted for, I think, and you want to do that, then it has to come before board because it's not budgeted for.
Yeah.
So just an adjustment to the verbiage here of if budgeted, or if not budgeted, then it would need to come before the board.
Yes, and I would, the, I would also like to, just a one sentence under the, this line right here, if approved?
That did.
It should be changed.
That did change with the finance committee yesterday, they did change it slightly to, and I didn't send the updated version to Peggy, so I apologize for that. We put a period after the committee, we did add in if approved by the committee, so I would just change that verbiage to if approved by the committee and not budgeted.
Yes, I, I would probably, that, that's what I was getting at, it, it shouldn't say committee if approved, it should probably read if the committee recommends to approve.
If recommended by the committee and not budgeted.
And not budgeted.
And not budgeted, department head will present, yeah.
Because it's, it's not approved, it's a recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah, correct.
True, yep.
Mr. Chair, and anybody can answer this, so when you talk about promotion, are you talking about stepping?
No.
When I talk about promotions, I'm probably interchanging my language, when she's talking about career ladders, like the example that she gave in the assessor's office, when people are starting in those positions, they have requirements, there's statutory requirements of certain educational requirements and thresholds that they have to meet. So we've incorporated ladders into that as they meet each of those thresholds, and, and generally speaking, as you meet one of those milestones, generally speaking, in the departments, what that does for the position is it raises it up a grade, that's a general, generality.
Correct, so my question is, is how many of those happen a year and how many are, couldn't come before this board?
Career ladders are brand new.
Career ladders are brand new.
We don't have them, or haven't had them.
Is this pay scale, is this a career ladder?
No.
That is the entirety of the.
There are different levels, there are ladder positions in there.
So at grade seven, there is the appraiser trainee, then eight would be the AMA certification, nine would be the CMA, 10 would be SAMA, chief deputy is also at a 10, and then at an 11 would be a chief deputy with a SAMA. So that's a good example of.
For brevity's sake, I will have to talk with you about what we're just talking about here at a later date.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, go ahead Tiara, then you have the.
Yep, so same.
We need a motion for that.
Oh, we do need a motion, sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the change to the personnel policy for the career ladders?
As, make the motion as discussed.
As discussed. So I have a motion by Barry, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, all right, motion carries.
So the second item is the contract addendum to the Teamsters Courthouse Union implementing how to move people within the career ladder, and I do refer back to the policy that we just approved in doing so. The only outlier for this is going to be the heavy and light equipment operators for the transfer station, as that was discussed, that was pretty much the initiation of the career ladders, so that one we would be planning to backdate to a 1-1 for their retro of their pay.
So I'll ask the question, is, did we put that in the budget to retro them back to 1-1?
I believe that those items, if I recall, I do believe I did put for heavy equipment operator in those budgets.
Do we have a motion to approve, approve the contract addendums? For Teamsters 320, and what else was the other one? For the courthouse?
They're both for Teamsters 320, the second addendum was just adding those new positions into their salary schedule.
Okay, okay, for, do we have a motion to approve the two addendums for the 320 courthouse?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second, motion by Erica, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Richard, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you Tiara. Let, let, we will take a five-minute break, so back here at 10:21. So back here at 10:21.
This is a new one.[194.93]
Begging of pellets, for instance, you would have to come back to the county and say, I want to expand this. And it might be completely appropriate to where you are. I'm not, I don't know exactly.
Right.
The property, so.
Mr. Chair, Kyle, who was at the meeting on Wednesday night? What were the concerns? Were there? Any concerns from residents, neighbors?
I would just say that, yeah, so the township was not there. There was, the neighbors to the west were there, I believe, four of them.
Well, there's two neighbors that spoke. One was right next to it, and I think one was across the road.
Same family name, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Biggest concern, security.
Will this be fenced?
Likely. That's my strong preference. The exact nature of the fence is to be determined because the state regulations on the potential requirements for the physical characteristics of the fence have not been finalized yet. So we're waiting to put exactly what properties of the fence that we're specking out in our full detailed business operations plan until the state regulations get finalized. Again, I do have a strong preference for a physical barrier of some type, or maybe multiple. A simple like barbed wire cattle fence in the cattle gate is not something that I would feel sufficient long term, would be a permanent sole security barrier that, as it is in place right now.
And this is fairly secluded, where?
Correct.
Where you intend on it being, it's about close to 400 feet off the road, 377 feet, or 237 feet?
Correct.
Nope. 377 feet. The sewer is 237 feet. So it's.
Set back from the right of way of the road, yes.
Are you going to have internet, internet access there, Wi-Fi, so for cam, you know, for camera use and?
Absolutely. A great question. There's a newly constructed cell tower right across the road from it. Fantastic signal, 5G, all of that. In addition, we believe there's buried fiber optic line right there from RVIG. So you've got your two internet provider sources right there for redundancy. We may add a third via like something along the lines of Starlink. So there's a, you know, even a tertiary backup for network connectivity and resilience. And then Wi-Fi will cover every inch of the developed property, and maybe some places not.
I'm just, I'm just concerned, I'm just saying that because for your security, for if, if it's well, if it's well protected and, and you, and people, you're going to have less, less issues from people trying to break in and steal something, you know, and.
Hundred percent.
You'll keep those kids out of there for sure that are trying to, you know, that are just goofing around and make, well, if you know that it's cameras on everything and they're going to get caught, they're not going to go in. The sophisticated ones, I don't know, are going to come in there for, for a smoke, but I mean, it's, you know, it's just kids, honest, or goofing around kids, it'll, you will keep them out, and I think that'll be the main worry on yours, so.
Yeah, yeah, and as, as I said in, in the previous meeting, you know, our priority number one with approach security is not to put a target on your back in the first place.
Right.
So we want to obscure, you know, any sight into facility. We want to minimize, you know, the, the attention that it could potentially attract, so minimizing any light. There's not going to be any signage as to what the nature of the business is going to be. We're going to minimize that.
Not anymore. Nate's writing your address down, so.
We'll do what we can.
Mr. Chair, Kyle, has there been any updated guidance from the state about, I mean, this is a one of one so far, and this is brand new. We don't, we, we don't even know what we don't know about this. You've got nothing.
I've seen nothing.
We asked down at AMC last week, and, and even the legislatures, they didn't really, they didn't speak any specifics.
It's, it's not with their, it's not in their ball court, you know, it's not in their court anymore. It's with the rule makers now, and their.
I think what's important for us to remember is we're just here to dictate the land use.
Yep.
Is, is where it is appropriate for this, the state regulates everything else. You know, I think, you know, one thing that I, I did bring up on, on Wednesday, and is, is according to the state, you know, recommendations, they do recommend that it is in an industrial area, which this is an agricultural area. However, we have our zoning that it'll, our current zoning, this is a, is an appropriate land use that as, which is why he's here. But I did, I did just want to, to make one more note about a concern that was brought up is in the event of a power outage. So I just wanted you, that was a question that was brought up on Wednesday, so I just want to give you an opportunity to speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a fantastic concern, something we've thought through well because of power consumption at these, the facilities of this nature are notable, let's say. My, we're investigating all options on the table in terms of, do we want, you know, a, like a petroleum-based generator onsite. That's definitely an option. There are other options as well, like Generac makes what, what's called a power cell, which is basically a massive bank of lithium batteries. You can either attach that, source the energy to charge that pack from a solar array for more of an off-grid approach, or you can just have it fed in from the utility line when the line is operational and providing power. Going to also work with I task a man trap. I've spoken with them a couple of times already on the potential, you know, as we build this facility out, and, you know, consumption goes up on that line, of improving the infrastructure along that road for all residents, not just, not just us. So if we can get something that's buried from the right of way to the substation located on 37, that's going to be a net benefit for every resident in the area using that power for any, any reason. So, you know, we've experienced this, you know, living where we do, where storms, wind, things of that nature, cause interruptions in power. That's just how it is in rural, you know, wooded areas in Minnesota. But given that that's kind of a known, that we can address with certain mitigation techniques that are pretty well understood, be working with my contractor electricians, as well as the general contractor that we're, we're tentatively working with here to make sure that that's thoroughly addressed, either by a, something like a diesel generator that you see out of, probably outside of this building as well, but you know, other means that have a minimal carbon footprint, noise footprint, things of that nature.
I'm just asking questions now from my own knowledge. Is your, is this a greenhouse facility? So you're, is it grow, or are you using, using the dirt below it? Are you just bringing, they're not hydroponic plants, are they? Or are they?
Our grow methodology that we're planning for it this time is going to be using hydroponic
Okay.
cultivation techniques with what we call coconut core. So it's like the hair off of the coconut. Buy this as a cultivation material and then use water purification systems that then are mixed with nutrients designed for such a system. It's all computer controlled and precisely dosed on a main line so that there's no runoff to waste. It's extremely efficient and there's, there's no har, like harmful runoff in terms of phosphates, nitrates, things like that, that are well known to be harmful to aquifers, sensitive like shoreline areas, things of that, that nature.
Yeah, I mean, I have a high tunnel for tomatoes and cucumbers and stuff, so I mean, and there's soil testers to tell you the appropriate moisture at different depths. I mean, so it's not, you're not wasting, so I, I know you're way above that too, so. For water usage, I think you're well, I mean, well suited, easy to monitor those, and I don't, like you said, I don't think there's going to be any runoff. You don't want to, you don't want overly wet soil, because that will harm the plant too, so. I, it's just, I'm just curious, it's just a, it's a new thing, so it's.
When I'll make additional comments, reading through what the state's guidance is from the Office of Cannabis Management to local governments, does seem like they're going to require the county to be sort of the regulators in terms of purely assessment of these facilities. You know, as this is emerging industry and this is kind of a novel use case for all of us, you know, this is something where we're, we're totally willing to partner and help everybody better understand this industry, understand the nuances that come with it, the challenges, and also, you know, where we can lend a hand in developing a sustainable compliant and well-regulated industry for, for the county. And like I mentioned previously, this doesn't have just a benefit in terms of just the raw tax revenue for the county, but really bringing not only jobs in the agricultural sense within the facility, but really innovating technology space, using the AI approaches that, that we're developing in-house. So making a name for ourselves in the county is leading in that tech space.
I guess I, I, I don't have any really more questions. Is there anything that we should be specific on language on this, Kyle, or noting that the state's regulations are changing and your, the compliance at state would obviously fall?
Right, right. The only thing I did want to talk, well, two things, I mean, just, you and I had a conversation a little bit after the meeting there about security, and we didn't touch on it in that public hearing, but the plan is potentially to have the staff 24 hours a day, right, seven days a week, making the likelihood of somebody breaking and entering a lot less likely. And then the second thing I just want to touch on, when we were talking setbacks, we had a long conversation about where to measure them from, and we said property lines. So if you look at this, in one case, the residence on the adjoining property is 510 feet from that line, but he is 300 feet from that line. Is the interpretation that maybe 500 as well?
I'm not understanding completely the question.
So what, what, what is the setback required? What's the feet?
So the only one that would be applicable to him, because we don't have a school here, we don't have a church, we don't have daycare, we don't have a park, a playground. The only thing we have is a residence on an adjacent property. And at that point, it's 500 feet.
500 feet from where? Or you say 500?
Residence.
Property line, or the residence, is that your question?
Well, Mike, so we said that the setback shall be, setback shall be measured from property lines. So in this case.
The state, the state.
Nope, this one has all the.
The state says 500 feet from.
Yep, there you go.
Residence?
Yeah, so the state's, but the, the state statute doesn't tell you where to measure them, and that's.
We, we, we talked about that when we were in our comp plan.
Because we wanted to increase it to 1,000, but the state statute wouldn't allow us.
Right.
The state statute doesn't determine, doesn't state a residence on the adjoining, or adjacent parcel specifically.
So in this instance, we're 810 feet from, from the building to the residence, but we're 510 feet from the property line to.
300 feet from the property line.
No, property, property line to the residence.
510, yeah, and then 300 and, or 300.
I would, if I was interpreting, I would say it's 500 feet from the property line, which is what the state would require. I mean, that's what, because if you have no, if you have no residents up there, you know, if you're out in the, if you have a 40 and there's nobody building, then you could build right on the property line.
Yeah, until somebody came, and then that would restrict them from building.
So are we questioning whether or not this map, like whether they need to move over 200 feet, or leave it where it is?
Yeah, rather than making that muddy at the planning commission or anything, but having that discussion with you, I think that would be your intent.
Mm-hmm.
I think the intent, to, to me, if they put it in there, I would say the intent is 500 feet from the property line.
Right.
I, I mean.
So this should be over 200 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you would have no, there's no reason for it, you know.
Yep.
Right.
Because there's most area would be not.
Is that doable, to move your building over 200 feet?
Yeah, def, definitely. We, we laid this out, as you're seeing here, because of how we interpret, our best interpretation of the cannabis zoning ordinance setbacks as they're published.
Well, you'd have to move it away from the road another 123 feet and over 200 feet.
No.
Property line would be the road. You don't own on the south side of the road.
That's not, that's not part of the ordinance, so the.
I think what Barry's saying is if there was a residence on the south side of the road, right?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be 500 from that as well.
Oh.
I'm saying it, I, I interpret residence is a bad word. I would, why didn't they just say property line? Because that's what.
Well, we made the property line.
I know, but I, I interpret. I interpret it as, there has to be a setback from property line. Does the state require a setback from property line? As state property line?
No, they only, there was just suggestions, I believe.
If I recall, I think we talked about property line versus residence, and the idea was that if you went from the property line, it potentially would be further, is what I understood.
Well, I think there, I think there should be a setback from property line, so, and I'm fine with 300 feet as setback from property line. And maybe that's what the county should standardize, and, and five, and the state has a 500 foot setback from residence. I mean, that's 300 feet, it's the length of a football field, so I'm give or take.
That should be plenty far.
That should, yeah.
They've got a local government to have, you can find it there.
What does that, what is our county ordinance say?
We don't have one.
On what?
We do on setbacks.
Well, 10 feet.
No, on cannabis. We have a, don't we have a cannabis?
Five, we said 500.
Yeah, from, from the property line.
Property line. That's what we, that's what we currently have, but our.
And it does.
It's approved? That, that one was, oh yeah, we did approve that one.
We also stated that our ordinance might need a lot of adjusting.
And was that specific to residence, or was that specific to just schools?
That was property line, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
So.
There's further setbacks from what you're speaking of, schools and those, parks.
We did 1,000 from a school, 500 from a church, daycare, library, or a residence on an adjacent property. Then 500 from a residential treatment facility, and 500 from a park, playground, or athletic field.
And did we say that from the measure of distance is a property line, or?
Back shall be measured from property line. Because we were trying to determine, remember, if, well, the discussion was, is if you have the facility, but somebody's outside, I think the conversation was trying the product or something. Could you be closer, you know, like if you had a, an area where, you know, that. So we were just trying to make a, establish a point of where to measure from, not knowing probably how restrictive it was, because I mean, that's, we had the conversation about an industrial area. Well, once we start getting 500 feet, basically all four sides, the only place it works is in somewhere like this setting, because you need such a big area. So if you're, are you okay with 500?
With, in, from the exterior property, the, the exterior perimeter inside this lot?
Right, so I mean, here's the other thing. Technically, when looking at setbacks on the south side of the property, you have County 26, that's a county road. You most likely have 50 feet of right of way, plus you're going to have 45 feet of setback there for a house, so you're 95 from center there. So you probably wouldn't have to go back much further, but you would have to go farther east, if that makes sense.
What, what is it from the road now, 323?
377.
377 plus 95, yeah, you wouldn't have to go over.
I would be willing to, but, I mean, in terms of adhering to a, an ordinance that's been passed and is, you know, effective, I mean, is there going to be a modification of the ordinance as it's written then, so that we're on the same page?
I guess I got, ask Kyle then, is, is it stated now, you cannot, in our ordinance, in our ordinance, the state's not clear. So there's some gray area there. The state's not clear. In our ordinance, does it say 500 feet from the property line, or what is, if I, you know?
Yes, says 500 feet from a residence on an adjacent property, and then we set that, that we'd measure that from the property lines, because what we were trying to determine.
I don't understand how that puts you mean by that.
Right, so like if you were, our thought was if this house is here, okay, this one, just put it here, do we measure from here, 500? We were talking about people trying the product, would it be back here? Where do you measure from? So we said, okay, we obviously have an established boundary with a property line, will just have to be 500 feet from that.
So that's what our, our ordinance says currently, 500 feet.
That's my interpretation, but I want to make sure that.
But, but if there's no, if there's no residence.
Still from the property.
Right.
Then, then that doesn't, our ordinance doesn't apply.
Right.
But there is a residence.
No, but on, on the other side, or on the road side.
So it's obviously we have to review this and amend it, if, because we want a setback from the property line, regardless if there's a house there or not.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we, exactly, and I think it was.
It doesn't have to be 500 feet, but we need a setback.
Yeah, you were, it was implemented with good intent, but we just hadn't had to administer it yet, and now we have, and so, I mean, is it something that we can look at, Tim, to answer your question, you know, you got to go through the state licensing and stuff. You're probably a little ways out on construction of this building, so I think yes. We're actually doing an ordinance update, and this is something that probably.
Well, we can, you know, and this is one, I mean, we have a lot of ordinances that we're, we'll be looking at updating, but if we can, I mean, if there's an ordinance that, that we have to fast track, we can fast track specific ordinances, and we can prioritize which ones. Now, if this is one, we see the fault, now I want a setback from that road. I want to have a setback. Now, whether it's 500 feet or 100 feet, I mean, I think we need to establish what's reasonable, even if there's no residence.
Yep.
Or 50 feet. I don't, I don't even know, you know, I mean, but we have, so we will have to adjust that, I believe.
I agree.
This board should address this in a timely way.
500 feet is too much. It's just going to make.
From a property line, without.
It's going to make it too hard to do, and I don't know what you would gain by being that far.
What is an appropriate distance? That's what we're going to have to figure out.
500 is a long.
And I, and I think why we ended up doing it, I recall, two months ago, discussing, the reason why we went from the property line is because really the planning commission wanted increased.
Beyond what the state would allow.
Beyond what the state would allow, and the state wouldn't allow it, so we were trying to accommodate.
Yes, I think, I think you're right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think, I think that's appropriate. We need to have setbacks regardless if there's
Yep.
buildings there or not, but what's appropriate, I think we will be addressing that, and we'll have to do, give thought. I can't see that it being more than 300 feet.
No, I can't.
But, I mean, we're going to have to have that decision.
It's fine here, no matter if we're going to, if we're saying it'll be 300 feet.
So what we're saying is, if this is approved, which I anticipate it will be, we will be reviewing our ordinance, and, and I would say, currently you have to be 500 feet, so the, as proposed, but if we, we can make this a stipulation, if we change our ordinance, you can abide by the new ordinance settings and not the old one. If that's as best that we can do today.
What, what is your potential start date for construction? I mean, I, do you have to wait for the late, the state to get all their licensing in place, or is, okay?
No, it, it'd really be, you know, road restrictions, we're all, I'm sure familiar with that. That's a little bit of an unknown, that's kind of up to mother nature, but, you know, we'd really like to break ground, at least on the, you know, the well, septic, infrastructure of that nature, work with the power company, do at least get a transformer onsite, things of that nature. Late May, potentially early June, so it, pretty soon. And one thing I might add is a, is a little piece of input from my perspective, you have different businesses within this industry that will have different impacts on the surrounding land, residences, things of that nature, that may require their own unique setbacks. So just consider, like, say you're doing like your, your hoop house greenhouse approach, where you don't have the odor and access control where you do with indoor facilities, where there's not going to be any odor, we're going to have odor control, secured access, things of that nature. That may warrant different setbacks than something like the hoop house approach versus also things like, like retail dispensaries and the micro business licenses, which permit onsite consumption, that we do not. So there'll be no onsite consumption, there's not going to be any of that going on strictly enforced. There's not even going to be any cash onsite. This is not going to be a cash-only business. We're going to be banking just like everyone else. So, so there's, there's really no incentive for thieves to, to break in other than curiosity alone. So for the, for those reasons, you know, when you're discussing, you know, setback modifications, it may warrant discussion that the different types of businesses may have different setback implications.
Very good point.
Yeah, do we have anybody else that would like to make any comment? Would you please come up to the microphone, state your name and add?
What's the setback for a normal storage building off of a property line?
10 feet.
10 feet.
So ask yourselves, why are you trying to get it so far away from a property line? It's a storage building.
There's odor, there's a.
There's not.
There is. There's people that claim there's odor, and so there is potential, maybe not in your facility, but there is odor, so you have to address that as a, as an ordinance.
Diesel? You start up your tractor in a storage building?
Well, no, the last gentleman, he, he first indicated to us that he wanted to dispose of it, he was going to burn it. So I mean, the thing with an ordinance is, is it's not one, it's one shoe fits all type of thing, we, it's not.
Yeah, I think if you look at it.
What's the, right.
Well, just for your information, we're looking seriously at storage buildings also, and there should be setbacks greater and should be trees between any structures, so.
If he has his way, yeah.
That's the point.
Do we, do we, uh, do we have any, do we need any more information? Any more discussion?
There's more questions than there is answers here, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, no state guidelines. I mean, every question that I asked was, well, we think maybe no real answer. Setbacks, we're still concerned with that. I mean, once the horse is out of the barn like they say, well, then the next grower is going to say, well, you let them do it. And so, I mean, I'm not clear on some of these things.
Well, just be aware for clarification, you're not approving any setbacks, so the site plan, I mean, right now, we're looking at, it has to be 500 feet. And there doesn't have to be any special stipulations or conditions on that. When he comes to build this and get a, an actual building permit for the facility, he has to meet 500 feet in order for us to give it to him, just to, just to be clear on that.
And the other thing is, if we approve this according to the work plan, that the, the work plan is saying that there's, there's not going to be an order because of the process that you're doing, it's, I think that's important to note, that that's, that's a controlled one. So if the next one comes in and it's a different growing facility, and there, there are those concerns of odor, with that approach, there might be more restrictions or questions for them also.
Would it be accurate, Kyle, to say that this, this really is similar to all the discussion we've had about feedlots? Like, feedlots are regulated by the state. These are regulated by the state. So I mean, we, we, we have to, as hard as it sometimes is, believe that the state is, is going to regulate this and follow and answer all these questions we don't know with their regulations.
Right, so I mean, 100%, and when we go back to this, like, so, you know, one of the questions, describe how adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space. Obviously, that is something that is most likely met here. You describe how adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or being provided. He's talked about, I'm trying to think of that. You were recycling your water, basically. So talking about drainage, there's no nutrients leaving this building from the operation itself. Talking about access roads, when we were, you know, one of the conversations is always heavy truck traffic. Well, when you're talking about producing only 800 pounds of a material a year, he's using, what do you call it, a transport van?
It's like a Sprinter.
Yeah, so like a FedEx, you know, something that shows up with packages. The next question, how establishing the conditional use permit will not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property? So if there is, the question is if there, if there's vacant property near this, is this type of use going to affect that development? That's the question you got to ask yourselves. Next one, describe how a conditional use permit, if granted, will not harm the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish impaired property values. So you're looking at this, putting up a building and having some type of greenhouse within it, do you believe that is going to impair or impede somebody's property values or use and enjoyment of their property?
That isn't visible from how, or from the property lines or roads.
Nowhere near the impact of a feedlot.
No, yes.
That's what I mean.
No, but correct.
Whatever your feelings are on, on it, this is not.
If you put it though on 10-foot setback in a, in a
Yes.
200-foot long building on a property, you know, right down, it will diminish your value if you're the.
Yeah, and it's.
So that's why you want larger setbacks.
We want a setback, but a reasonable one.
Now, from the road, you could argue that there's not a, it's not going to. Now, from the road, you could argue that there's not a, it's not going to hurt the value across the, I mean, you could argue that. I don't know. You know, it's debatable at that point. So we do need setbacks.
Normally, I mean, when you have a campground or you have a gravel pit, you're, you're talking about noise, dust, vibration, traffic, right? I mean, then there's lots of things actually to consider. So when we were going through this in the planning commission, it's trying to keep them on track of what you're actually considering, right?
We're considering the sixth criteria of a conditional use permit.
Right.
Correct. And that's, that's all that we have, that we can, are considering.
Yep.
So do we have a motion?
Kyle, how would you like the motion to read?
Yeah.
Just concur with planning and zoning with the required, with the.
Yeah, I think that'd be adequate.
Just motion to approve and concur with planning and zoning?
Right.
Recommendations and requirements?
Yeah.
As, as submitted by the building plan?
Yep.
Okay, so moved.
So the motion by Barry, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Richard. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Good. Motion carries.
The last item I have for you is just a plat approval. It's an acknowledgement for right investments in Lakeview County. So I can't recall if we had a motion on these in the past, but again, it's just an acknowledgement. Surveyor, put your signature block on there. This is within that two-mile territorial, Lakeview has the authority to approve, which they have. So again, it's just an acknowledgement if you want to either just have the chair sign it or make a motion to acknowledge, I don't.
Kyle, there, there was a holdup on this for some reason. What was holding this up?
So basically, we have two different types of densities for common interest communities. One is for residential use and one is for storage. This didn't meet the residential density requirement, so it went through a variance process to meet that, which it has. So there's going to be one residence and I believe three storage buildings on a commonly owned piece of property with a stipulation by the Board of Adjustments that there could be no more residences on there.
So what did you say? You want us to just acknowledge it?
Well, yeah. So your signature block is on there for, for Kerry and Dave. So it's just, we've done this and sometimes the surveyor puts them on there, sometimes they don't.
So.
Wired that we sign it, but.
Make a motion to acknowledge this.
I would authorize the signature.
Make a motion to authorize the signature of the chair acknowledging the final plat?
Yeah.
I'd say the colony, so Kerry.
Just the colony, yeah. I think it's both of us, but yeah, just the colony.
So moved.
Do we have a, do we have a motion? In a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Is there any further, before I die here, any further items for, for, for the good of the order?
Mr. Chair, Kyle, I have one other question. Watershed is going through their plans, upgrading the rules, and we needed to get some of the county's rules to make sure they mesh. Is that, have you gotten that over to them yet? So we can finalize those together?
I got to get with Jim one last quick time. And my comments are easy, good to go. But his, in terms of road project and things like that are a little bit deeper. But as soon as he, he's coming to that, I believe, we can touch base with him immediately afterwards.
So before their next meeting, the Watershed meeting, we will have something from the county, but perfect. Good. Thank you.
All right. We are adjourned. Work session.
Break again before your work session?
What? Yes, we will take a little break before the work session. Five minutes, that's all you get.